With a little time and a big, big heart, you can change the world. You can raise a bar. With a little time and a big, big heart, you can change the world. You can raise a bar. It's all about a little smile.
Para las personas que prefieren escuchar esta junta en español, pueden pasar con nuestro equipo de intérpretes al fondo de la sala del Concilio de la Ciudad para recibir asistencia. Si prefieres ver la transmisión desde tu computador o dispositivo móvil, puedes seguir toda la junta completamente en español en la página web sanantonio.gov/tbsa o también desde su televisor usando el sistema SAP en los canales que ves en pantalla. Por último, no olvides descargar la agenda de esta junta en la página web de español de la Ciudad de San Antonio en sanantonio.gov-español.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting. The time is 9:09 a.m. on the seventh day of December 2023. We'll go out and call our meeting in order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Councilmember Corr. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. Councilmember Villagrande.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Castillo. Councilmember Cabeo Haberta.
Here.
Councilmember Alderete Gavito.
Here.
Councilmember Palais.
Here.
Councilmember Courage.
President.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Nuremberg. Mayor, we have a call.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting. We'll get us started. We'll turn the floor over to Councilman White to welcome our indicator.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor today to introduce Pastor Robert Bennett. Pastor Bennett has been a senior pastor of Madison Hills Baptist Church here in San Antonio for the past seven years. He's been pastoring for 40 years in Southern Baptist churches across Texas. He received his Bachelor's of Science in Christian Education from Wayland Baptist University and a Pastoral Care Diploma from Southern Baptist Theological Seminaries. The pastor graduated from Luther Rice College and Seminary with a Master's in Christian Studies. He's been married to Cherie for 41 years and has two amazing children, Jake and Josh, and a beautiful granddaughter. So Pastor, thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you so much. Just pray. Holy God, thank you for the blessings that you've given our great city, the city of San Antonio. Thank you, Lord, as we pray and give you glory and honor for all those who are sitting before us today. Thank you, God, for the decisions they'll make today. Thank you, Lord, for the best blessing they give to our city and our people. God, thank you for the men and women that have given themselves to this commission. And in today, God, as we gather together in this place, that you would watch over all of those that are in law enforcement, firefighters, EMS, military, hospital workers. God bless them and watch over them today. Help them have your hug of blessing. Thank you, God, for the gift of life, the opportunity we have to serve each other. Thank you, God, for the help that you've given us and the convictions that we have to bless others in our city. And God, I pray that your Spirit would lead us and guide us and that you would remember us all the days of our life and that you, the peace, the God of peace, will give us help in all that we need to do. And Father, renew our strength in your presence for your joy, your love, and God, help us to have that beautiful peace in our city that we all long for. Thank you for your blessing. In the name of the Father and the Son Jesus and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Bennett. All right. We have a swearing-in of our new mayor pro tem. So if I could ask Councilmember Cabeo Haberta to approach the podium.
Raise your right hand. I, Melissa Cabeo-Haberta.
I, Melissa Cabeo-Haberta.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Mayor Pro Tem.
Of Mayor Pro Tem.
For the city of San Antonio.
For the city of San Antonio.
In the state of Texas.
In the state of Texas.
From December 7th, 2023.
From December 7th, 2023.
Through February 21st, 2024.
Through February 21st, 2024.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Cabeo-Haberta, and thank you, Councilmember Castillo, for your term. Now, there are no minutes to approve, so we'll go right into our consent agenda. And I recognize there's a full house today. We've got a lot of folks that we want to recognize. We're going to get to that in just a moment. Let me ask my colleagues now if there are any items to pull from the consent agenda. The only item that we have listed for individual consideration is item four at this time.
Twenty-five.
Eleven and...
Item twenty-five?
Eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve? Okay. Any others? All right. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent agenda. That's all items save for four, eleven, twelve, and twenty-five. Okay? There's a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. There are... There's one citizen signed up to speak on consent items. So let me call Jack Finger on item twenty-one.
Good morning, Mayor Nuremberg. And what I refer to as it gives me great joy to announce the best city council that money can buy. I don't say those words lightly. This is this... Following item I'm about to speak on gives me great joy because it's... It isn't every week that we get a chance to, well, show everybody something that y'all are really into these days. Mr. Audio Vision Man, put that up there if you would, there. The circled area there. Yeah. It's basically... Item twenty-one is an ordinance authorizing... Just forget the chicken scratching there. Ordinance authorizing a contract with Leinberger, Goggan, Blair, and Simpson for delinquent property tax collection services in the initial five-year, beginning January 21, 24, et cetera, et cetera, for about 15 million smackers there, yes. Return the camera, if you would, to the podium there. Yeah. So basically, y'all are going to give a $15 million contract to Blair, Goggan, and whoever there. But I happen to notice in the back of documents that quite a number of you have received campaign finance contributions from the shareholders, the board members of that particular company. You know, the same one that's going to... That you are going to... Whose contract you are going to vote upon today for $15 million there. Who received what? Well, I just happened to just jot them down on a little piece of paper here. The conflicts of interest, what I call it, item twenty-one. Mayor Nuremberg, you received $9,500. And folks, this is just for twenty... Last 24 months, not before that point when y'all received even more. Twenty-four months, Mr. Mayor, you got nine and a half grand there. Ms. Carr, you didn't get anything this time. But McKee Rodriguez, you got $1,000, sir. You finally made it to the big time, sir. You finally got a contribution there. Hooray! And very others. We've got various and sundry items, $2,000. Ms. Castillo, you only got about $500 bucks there. Mr. White, the newbie, you got just a $500. It's understandable since you're new to the council here. But Ms. Carr, I was going to say, just because you're a newbie, you tell Blair Goggins that it doesn't matter, that you can shake them down just as easily as Jalen and Manny can if they're not careful to you there. So, yeah. Now, my question is how... Blair Goggins, it's a pretty damn dumb company. Don't they know that they're not going to get this if y'all do the right thing and abstain from voting on item twenty-one for your conflict of interest? Uh-uh. I guess... I guess maybe Blair Goggins just knows something that I don't and none of us others do. It just might pass as fast as Santa's sleigh there, do you think? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finger. All right. We'll go into council discussion now. So I'll entertain any discussion on the consent items. Councilmember Villagrande.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to highlight item nine, which pertains to Mitchell Lake Audubon Center, viewed by many in the community as the hidden gem of San Antonio's South Side. If you don't remember, this is a SARS project and this was where all the waste for San Antonio came down. But today, we are going into execution of two funding agreements related to Mitchell Lake Audubon Center located in District Three. The first is with the National Audubon Society and will provide facility improvements in the rehabilitation of the birding center at the Mitchell Lake Audubon Center. And the second funding agreement will be for the construction of the Mitchell Lake Audubon Center entrance grate that will be overseen by SARS. And I'm so excited about today because this 600-acre Mitchell Lake deserves to be seen as the gem that it is. And with this entrance and with the improvements, we will see the numbers grow. And currently, Mitchell Lake draws over 12,000 visitors and 4,000 students annually, with 70% of the students serving... That they serve coming from Title I schools. So today, we make a change for just appreciating our environment and leading in the way that we can take something that once was kind of not very nice and make it into something that nature can come back and take over. So I look forward to the council approving this today.
Thank you, Councilmember Villagrande. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to highlight item number six, which is a contract with Facilities RX. And yesterday, we were talking about in B Sessions, the beta, and the importance of bringing on minority women-owned businesses to execute some of our contracts. And this business specifically is on District One. They are headquartered on North St. Mary's, so they've faced ups and downs over the last few years. And the resident... And the owner actually also lives in District One. So I wanted to shout out that they were able to get through this process and receive this award and be able to continue to do amazing work for us as a minority women-owned business. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. Councilmember Palais.
Mayor, as you know, my law firm represents a lot of school districts and the universe of my law firm touches often the universe of Leinberger, the one of the largest law firms in the entire nation, who represents almost every school district in Texas because of not just the excellent work they and their army of lawyers provide the community. But I'm also proud to say that sometimes they and I partner up on supporting nonprofit private organizations. And Leinberger, you've never been shy about saying yes whenever you're called to support our local nonprofits when they need it. And I just wanted to thank you guys for that service and thanks to every one of the lawyers on your team. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Palais. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none. There is a motion and a second for approval of all items save for four, eleven, twelve, and twenty-five. Please vote. Motion carries. Okay. Before we get into our individual items today, there are many folks in our audience today that we'd like to recognize. So if folks are getting up to departed, I would ask you just please keep the volume down because we'd like to get on with these recognitions. And we'll start. I'll turn the floor to Councilmember Villagrande for a special recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. As an advocate for the arts and history, I'm always proud to share when women are making history in the arts and when they are leading our community and moving it forward. Today, I wanted to invite Maurice McDermott, the president and CEO of the Witty Museum, to come up and to share. She has been part of the Witty Museum since 2004 and has announced her plans to set aside from the position as president and CEO of the Witty Museum on December 31st, 2023, concluding a tenure of 20 years in which she has galvanized community engagement and led a dramatic transformation and expansion of San Antonio's Witty Museum. She led the $100 million campus expansion, which is over 174,000 square feet, which housed the whales exhibit, which was probably my favorite. She has worked with the World Heritage Office in making sure that moved forward in a way that celebrated the entire city. When she was named president in 2004, her priority was to stabilize museum finances and implement a business model to keep the doors open. Under her leadership, the budget was balanced within two years and lines were out the door as the community enthusiastically welcomed the Witty's launch of a series of popular special exhibitions from around the country and world that included space and dinosaurs and all sorts of things that the kids just enjoyed. And growing up in San Antonio and visiting the Witty as a field... As one of the field trips, it was just amazing to see it transform. So she is... The Board of Trustees has announced that she... Maurice will be president emeritus starting January 2024. So we're not losing her completely. And she's going to be part of the 100th anniversary of the Witty Museum in 2026. And she is a... Your team is so professional and so outstanding and have really worked really hard. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for contributing to elevating the arts here in San Antonio and really giving a voice to all the other artists that says, "We need to be on that national stage. We need to be on that global stage." And you have done that. And you've also done an amazing job for an example of, "Hey, nonprofits, this is how you can raise money." So I want to give you some time to share and invite my council colleagues to share because I know you've impacted so many of our lives. Maurice, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Villagrande. And I have to say, I so appreciate your acknowledgement. It was really a great privilege to be side-by-side with you, Dr. Michelle Everidge and I and our team to work on the World Heritage... The San Antonio Missions World Heritage Interpreter Plan. And we have so many wonderful photographs of us in masks doing the community meetings throughout District Three. And it was truly a great joy to work with you. And now it's launched, which is great. Thank you, Mayor Nuremberg, for your sure-footed leadership and your proclamation and everything you've done for San Antonio and for the Witty, your aut trustee, as is a city manager, Eric Walsh. Thank you, Eric, for your innovation, especially when it comes to the Witty Museum. And thank you, council, for always being so supportive over these many years to support not only the Witty but the arts. You know, this city has really embraced what it is to be a creative soul of the city of San Antonio. There's nothing like that anywhere. It is because of your support at the Witty that we've been able to expand, as you said. We're proud that 100% of school districts come to the Witty Museum and all Title I schools, of course, are free. And this amazing board, represented today by Dirk Elmandorf, raises enough money to make sure that we reimburse all school buses. So that's a really important point to be fiscally... Enough fiscally sound to be able to reach out to the entire city of San Antonio. And when we ignited the new Witty, it was six years ago now. It's not new anymore. The people of San Antonio responded with 80% of that $100 million. And the city, of course, stepped up with enormous generosity to finish the project. We're proud that the Witty expansion has been an economic generator for Broadway with museums and cultural venues really growing by the day right now on the Broadway corridor. We've not completely survived the pandemic. The arts organizations, I can speak for them. We call it the pandemic economic desert. But we are getting better every day. And this past year, the Witty alone brought so many out-of-town visitors this last summer that we calculated it was $54 million in hotel motel tax receipts. And so that's the direction we want to go on path of the entire city. And finally, your confidence in the Witty has empowered the team and trustees to develop critically important exhibitions that are nationally recognized. As you know, the Black Cowboys American Story Exhibition is now in its fifth museum in the country. It's going to be off to the Autry in California soon as well. And it's going to come back next fall. And also the HB Body Adventure, that continues to win national awards and a recognition. We're proud to host your community engagement meetings on a regular basis. So thank you so much for allowing me and the Witty to be recognized today. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Don't sit down, Maurice. Maurice, don't sit down. I think we... There's a few others that would like to speak. And I'll just start. I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said and I'm not going to read your bio because it was read yesterday at the Mayor's Fitness Council as we were giving you a lifetime achievement award, which I'm certain you're going to get a lot more accolades over the next several months in recognition of your service at the Witty. I'll just reflect on the Witty just for a minute. And I hate to sound like a broken record, but when I got here in 2013, we were having a much different conversation about the Witty, about deferred maintenance and the buildings that were really crumbling. And to see the transformation over the last 10 years, not just of the Witty as a museum that our community enjoys, but also now as an internationally renowned living history museum, is really phenomenal. And to see the Witty-branded exhibits that are traveling around the country is something that I think we can all be proud of and frankly, would not have that opportunity if not for your incredible leadership. We sat at a round table in 2020 in April, really wondering what was going to happen with the cultural institutions in this community, the Witty being one because of those obligations. And not only have you risen from that, the Witty is in a better place than we could ever have imagined in its history. So congratulations to you, to the board, that fully supports your leadership. And I look forward and I appreciate your willingness to be engaged in the transition to the next era of Witty leadership. So congratulations, Maurice. Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate it.
Let me turn it now to Councilmember Corr.
Congratulations, Maurice. So I always think the sign of a great leader is not only what you can do for the community because everybody can see that, but it's how you grow the people around you. And I've actually had the opportunity to spend more time with your staff. And we have been able to be a part of programs like the Executive Reinvention Program. And just as much time as you've invested into the museum, you've invested into your staff and, of course, your daughter. And so I will always remember your legacy through the impact and the growth that you have created for them. And so for that, I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging my daughter, Julie. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. Councilmember Rocha Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Maurice. I am so excited that you'll be continuing on as emeritus. And so I wanted to let you know that I feel like the Witty Museum is a much more welcoming museum now. And I really feel like the residents of San Antonio feel like it's one of their treasures. And I really do think that it's because of you and your leadership. The way that you lead your staff, I think, is just so incredible. I see every time that I'm around, I feel like you're coaching and motivating. And so... And that's really neat to see. I also want to take congratulations on raising such a wonderful daughter, right? And she, like Dr. Carr said, carries your legacy and has your spunk as well, which I absolutely love. But again, just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the residents that I represent that get to come out to your area at the Witty and really enjoy some things that they may otherwise not have been able to enjoy with their families through the programming that you have continuously supported. So thank you to that dedication. I also think that it's incredible when your board was so ready to fundraise and honor all of the work and the leadership that you've done. And then, you know, just to have another board member say, "I will pledge another $1 million and match that gift," right? It was like, wow! It was like, wow, I wish she could do that. So incredible job. Thank you. And I look forward to continue to work with you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rocha Garcia. Councilmember Alder Tegavito.
Thank you, Maurice, so much for all that you've done for our community. I also am a huge fan of your daughter, and that speaks to you. And, and I agree with Dr. Councilwoman Cor on that, on your legacy, that you're not only leaving with her and all that she's doing for, for our community as well, but also too, I am personal friends with many of your team, and they always say the best things about you and your leadership. So I think that speaks volumes. Also, you know, my husband, George, and I take our daughters to the Witty, and it's, it's phenomenal, not only what it does for them, but for all the kids in our community. It inspires them, it educates them. And so thank you so much for, for doing that for, for our city. The Witty does have big shoes to fill, but I do see Dirk in the audience, and I, and I'm confident that they'll work closely with you so that, so that the Witty could have continued success, that you've led it on this trajectory. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I mean, I appreciate you, Councilwoman. I do want to say just for the record, my daughter's name is Julia Grisard. She is the, she's the founding, I guess, director of the Bear County Coalition, which has 17 superintendents on the board and works for education funding and advocacy. So thank you all for acknowledging her. Thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Maurice. Another round of applause, Maurice McDermott. Thank you. All right. Let me now turn the floor over to Councilmember Cor for a special recognition.
Okay. I have a really fun recognition that I get to make today. So I'd love to welcome Robert Borrego Jr. and Robert Borrego Jr. IV to come to the front. So today, we're recognizing Mr. Borrego's 91st birthday and also the 85th birthday of Adelita Tomales and Tortilla Factory. So we have a certificate of congratulations for you today, so I'm going to read the text, which I know is something I don't usually do. Okay. Since 1938, El Popo Tortilla Factory, now known as Adelita Tomales and Tortilla Factory, has been a beloved provider of authentic Mexican cuisine to the Los Angeles Heights community in our Alamo City. The factory was established by Robert Borrego Sr., who began as a salesman for La Vencedora Tortilla Factory, but was determined to start his own business. Together with his wife, Beatriz Martinez, they rented a corner property at Houston and Leona Street where the legacy of El Popo Tortilla Factory began. Over the years, the factory has touched the hearts of countless customers with their high-quality food and welcoming atmosphere. Equipped with an Xtamol Molino Metate and a hand-cranked corn tortilla press, the couple dedicated themselves to long hours of hard work. The family grew alongside their successful business. Robert Jr., Raoul, and Richard were inspired by their parents' diligence and went on to carry on the family tradition. The factory's continued success is owed to the unwavering support of generations of family members, loyal employees, and dedicated patrons. The factory of Robert the Mongo Sr. continues to be run by his family, and it serves as a reminder of his lasting impact. The walls of the factory have witnessed countless tales and have been featured in respected publications like the Wall Street Journal, Epicurious, and Authentic Texas Magazine. The members of the City Council of the City of San Antonio are proud to join you in celebrating this milestone occasion, and thank you for the services you have and continue to provide to our vibrant city. Happy 85th anniversary. Are there any words that you would like to share?
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman Cor. Thank you, Mayor Nuremberg, City Council, and the City of San Antonio for recognition today of the Borrego family legacy spanning 85 years. I'm the fourth generation, Robert Anthony, and I'm proud to continue our pride in providing tortillas, tomales, and traditional Mexican foods to San Antonio and beyond. In 1938, my great-grandfather, Roberto Sr., my great-grandmother, Beatriz, worked extremely hard to begin and maintain the success of El Popo Tortilla, originally located a few blocks away at Houston and Leona. Many of your parents or grandparents may remember it or our location at Reese and Brazos. El Popo was one of the first factories in San Antonio to revolutionize the industry by utilizing machinery in order to produce more than just corn tortillas. This shift and the assistance from their three sons, Robert, Raoul, and Richard, allowed for expansion to provide San Antonio's school districts, military commissaries, and area grocery stores with fresh tortillas. In 2008, Roberto Sr. was inducted into the Tortilla Industry Association's Hall of Fame for this feat and for his decades dedicated to the industry. In 1985, my grandfather, Roberto Jr., continued a legacy with Adelita Tomales and tortillas, first on West Avenue, then moved to 1130 Fresno, and we have remained there ever since. My grandfather is the embodiment of San Antonio history and culture as a graduate of Fox Tech in 1950. He may be the oldest still working in the industry, as he'll be celebrating his 92nd birthday here on Saturday. Today, you have enjoyed our products at Spurs games, Naiosa, and at the Convention Center. We hope you will join us this holiday season for some tomales or anytime for fresh all-meat barbacoa on traditional Nikstama corn tortillas with mazas still made from volcanic stones. Finally, I want to also recognize our coworkers and employees for their dedication and hard work. They are the heartbeat of our success, and we wouldn't have been here 85 years later without all of them, of any, of every generation, past and present. We are grateful to our loyal customers of San Antonio for eight decades of your patronage. Thank you again for this recognition, and we hope to continue another 85 years and keep true San Antonio culinary heritage alive.
Thank you all so much. And I understand that you brought us all goodies this morning, so we appreciate that.
Very welcome.
And as a daughter of a family-owned business, I understand the impact, and I love seeing the legacy carry on. So congratulations on all that you're doing.
Thank you.
If any of City Councilmembers want to share.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. I'll just say to the entire family, thank you for your legacy. The City of San Antonio, we had some visit San Antonio folks here. We're, one of the main ways we talk about San Antonio in the world now is the fact that we're a city of gastronomy. You are a part of laying that foundation, so congratulations on your 85th anniversary. Councilmember Alder Tegavito.
Yeah, no, I just, thank, thank you, Mayor. I just thank you for y'all's legacy. Thank you for all that y'all are doing for San Antonio and keeping our bellies warm. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Alder Tegavito. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations on 85 years. It's extremely exciting. Many of you might not know this, but Anthony is an honorary member of the District Two team by marriage. Thank you for all of, all that you do for the community, all the nourishment that you provide, and here's to many, many more.
Thank you, Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. Again, thank you for, very much for the gifts that you provide for the entire community. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now I'll turn it over to Councilmember McKee Rodriguez for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mayor. And I actually have a few. Today's going to be a very challenging day, but I'm going to start off on a, on a positive note. I want to wish a very, very happy birthday to a very, very special woman. She is an advocate for higher education, a philanthropist, a mogul, a poet, and a mother. She actually has many, many children, sons particularly. She once said, "Spur of the moment, I ball like Ginobili and you can get D'd upon," celebrating our beloved San Antonio Spurs while inviting the opposition to collect their Ls in a piece. Happy birthdays to the queen of rap, Nicki Minaj. I can't wait to get a copy of her new album, Pink Friday II. Now, and I said, I wanted a little bit of joy to start off, but these next two are really, really hard. We've had some losses in our community, and I've actually avoided saying this one out loud, but I want to honor one of my friends, Kerry Valderrama. Many of you will know him as a leader in our city's film industry, but here you will recognize him as the leader of Alamo City Studios and our partner in the Eastside Youth Content Creator Program. The San Antonio film and arts community continues to mourn the loss of one of its pioneers and advocates. Kerry was a generous and passionate person whose drive to strengthen San Antonio's film scene will be felt for many years to come. And when my office approached Kerry about starting a youth program for our Eastside students, he was an instrumental part in ensuring its creation, follow-through, and success. He was always so excited to share the next step and the next plan, and I could just feel that he was so excited for the future. We'd like to honor my friend Kerry and his friends and family today by remembering his brilliant life and all he did for our film community and for our city. And I'll read a certificate, and I, I think I see his dad in the crowd if you would like to come up. To the family of Kerry Jean Allen Valderrama, on behalf of the District Two office, please accept our deepest sympathy on the homegoing of your loved one. Mr. Kerry Valderrama's passing leaves a long legacy with a lifetime of service as a U.S. Airborne Infantryman, his passion as an award-winning director-producer in the entertainment industry, and his unwavering commitment to the community as founder of Alamo City Studios, which provided an opportunity for countless youth through the Eastside Youth Content Creator Program. Mr. Valderrama's decades of service are in the respect and admiration of those whose lives he touched. And although his passing has left a void in your hearts, we hope the family will be consoled by the memories of Mr. Kerry Valderrama's exceptional life. We know his smile will be forever etched in your memory.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Councilman. Kerry Allen Valderrama, this is the Valderrama for, is our son. His mother and I are so very proud of him. Kerry served in the 82nd Airborne Division. He fought in Afghanistan as an infantry fire team leader. His team was the point of the spear. Kerry pursued his passion more than anyone, acting, writing, directing, producing movies, and teaching. Alamo City Studios was founded by Kerry, and he was particularly proud of the success of the Eastside Youth Content Creation Program that was championed by Councilman Jalen McKee. His family will miss him dearly, as will his colleagues and friends. Kerry brought joy, laughter, and hope for a better future and was loved by all. As Christians, we will see him again. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And once again, want to send my deepest, deepest condolences. And as I said, he was a good friend of mine, and I, we're all going to miss him very much. So thank you. I have one more. I'd also like to honor Coach Elwood Plummer, a born and raised San Antonioan who attended Wheatley High School. He was a prolific basketball player and began his coaching career at St. Phillips College, then transitioned to Jackson State Wiley College, and was eventually named head coach of the Prairie View A&amp;M Panthers. He was the youngest head coach in the league at the age of 28. Coach then became the head of coach at Houston-Tillisson University and eventually associate athletic director. Beloved Coach Plummer passed in October and is deeply missed by his family and all of our community, and we'd like to honor his life and all the lives he's touched. And I'll read the certificate, and I do believe I see Ms. On behalf of the City Council of the City of San Antonio, specifically District Two residents, please accept our deepest condolences on the loss of your loved one. Coach Plummer was a loving husband, father, classmate, and friend who generously gave his time and effort for over 45 years to the sport of basketball and basketball players. He led many teams to championships, both on the court and as a coach. He was inducted into the Texas Black Sports Hall of Fame and the Prairie View Interscholastic League Coaches Association Hall of Fame. In 2006, Coach represented the United States Department of Defense, facilitating basketball clinics in Tokyo, Japan, and will be sorely missed in many, many communities around the world. In addition, his passing leaves us mourning the loss of a 15-year faithful member, member of Second Baptist Church, as an usher and facility director, an extraordinary educator and mentor, an exceptional athlete, and someone who had an absolute zeal for life. Although his homegoing leaves a void in your heart, we hope the family will be consoled by the memories of his extraordinarily, extraordinary life and the love that Coach had for his family, faith, community, classmates, friends, and basketball. We know his love for each and every one of you will forever remain etched in your memory, and we join you and your sorrow and extend our sincerest expressions of sympathy and prayers of comfort to those who were near to him. Thank you so much for being here, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, and the rest of the council members. My husband would be so proud, you know, to be recognized for the work that he did. Both of us as HBCU graduates, we come from communities where you might have a single parent or no one has been to college. So it's very important for him that the young men and women that he taught and coached would become productive people in their communities. And that seems something that he was very successful at. In March, they had a gathering at the church. They wanted to have lunch with Coach. And I was kind of scared because he put it out that everybody was invited. So we were kind of terrified, how are we going to pay for this? The whole city comes. But it was very good for his players to come together and thank him for what he did for them and how he improved their lives. John Wooden used to say, "Good coaches win games. Great coaches change lives." And that's what he did, and hopefully that's what my students will remember, that I tried to do for them as well. Thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you so much for being here and for those words. And I know I don't have to tell you how inspirational and impactful he has been for our community, so we're sending all of our love to, to you and to all who knew Coach. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. Now I'll turn the floor to Councilmember Rocha Garcia for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mayor. And today, I want to recognize our District Four appointee to the Brooks Development Authority, Dr. Lorraine Pulido, who was recently selected to serve as chair and who previously served as the vice chair of Brooks. Dr. Pulido works as a communications manager for VIA, and she has more than 22 years' experience in marketing and communications, previously serving as public relations manager for the City of San Antonio and the Health Department. She also serves on the Alamo College District Board of Trustees for District Four and as an adjunct faculty member in the Communications Department at Texas A&amp;M San Antonio. Dr. Pulido was appointed to the Brooks Development Authority for the Board of Directors in December 2017. She earned a PhD in Business and Leadership Studies from Our Lady of the Lake University. So she's part of the 1% Latinas who have attained a PhD. Dr. Pulido also earned a Master of Science in Journalism from Columbia University and a Bachelor of Arts in English from the University of Pennsylvania. I'm incredibly proud of Dr. Pulido, who is an exceptional civic leader from the South Side. I'm grateful for her service to our community and want to take a moment to acknowledge that Dr. Pulido is the first woman and the first Latina to serve as chair of Brooks since it was created in 2001. And if you ask me, it's long overdue. But I'm also proud to witness this moment in history and recognize Dr. Pulido. I do want to take the opportunity to say that our vice chair, the new Brooks vice chair is also in the house, and that's Rudy Garza, who we'll be hearing from later. But we all know that representation matters and visibility is important, and we need to ensure that younger generations see women and people of different backgrounds and positions of power and influence. And you do it beautifully, Dr. Pulido. Although women make up half of the world's population, we're still drastically underrepresented in elected offices, in boards, and in the C-suite. Globally, women hold only 19.7% of board seats. 6.7% are board chairs. 5% are CEOs. 15.7% of CFO positions are held by women. And that's just a global perspective that I'm giving you all. So we've got a lot of work to do. But since the research has begun, there's been a gradual increase in the number of women on boards. Empowering girls and women has been a priority for me and for this council long before we could have even imagined it. There is a lot of work, and I'm proud to celebrate the talented women who make up San Antonio and make it a more equitable and diverse and inclusive community like Dr. Pulido. And before I turn it over to Dr. Pulido to say a few words, I also want to thank the staff over at the DEIA office and the City Clerk's office for leading an increase in the number of women serving in our city's boards and commissions, and I love to continue the work with that. Dr. Pulido was the featured guest speaker of a webinar at the City of San Antonio's event that we hosted in August in partnership with United We's Appointments Project. She shared her experience serving on the Brooks and the Alamo Colleges and encouraged other women to become civic leaders. Dr. Pulido is a great example of a leader who has benefited from the sacrifices of other women who have paved the way, and she is committed to tearing down barriers and building pathways for younger women to realize their full potential as leaders. So congratulations, Dr. Pulido, and the floor is now yours to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. It's a great honor to be here today. I, first of all, want to thank Councilwoman Dr. Adriana Rocha Garcia for her leadership and for reappointing me to the Brooks Board. And also a special shout out to Councilwoman Phyllis Villagrand on who's, in on whose, in whose district our campus of Brooks resides. I'm definitely very excited about this opportunity. I can tell you, as Dr. Rocha Garcia indicated, I've been on this board since 2018, and I've been serving as Vice Chair since 2019. And now to have been elected as Chair, as the first female Chair, and also the first Latina female to serve in this capacity, is a privilege that I owe to everyone who came before me, all of the women that fought for us, that lifted us up, and that still inspire us. This honor wouldn't have been possible without the former and current Brooks Board members, staff members, and visionary leaders, including our current President and CEO, Leo Gomez. I also want to congratulate the Vice Chair-elect, who's sitting here, Rudy Garza, and our, our Treasurer-elect, Dan Rosser, who I'm excited to serve with next year. I'd also like to thank my employer, VIA Metropolitan Transit, where we make connections every day, and I'm proud to work there. I'm also happy because VIA helps to encourage its employees to serve in our community in other capacities, such as the Brooks Board. Public service has been my life's mission since very young age. You know, going back to Harlando Middle School and Harlando High School, continuing on to University of Penn and Columbia and Our Lady of the Lake. So being able to serve my community as a public servant, y'all know that this is something that comes from your heart, that you're passionate about, and that you enjoy and look forward to doing every day. And I find this privilege something that I'll always be grateful for, to be able to serve on the Brooks Board. And to be Chair is something that I will not take lightly, and I hope to continue to make you proud. To help oversee Brooks, which is an organization that makes a difference in the lives of thousands, it's a responsibility that I always, I always will cherish and that I will never take for granted. Brooks is a community where more than 1,700 people live, 5,300 people work, and 2,500 students learn. We're enhancing lives every day, y'all. Thank you for your continued support of Brooks and the economic development that we help bring to San Antonio, to Texas, and the United States.
Dr. Pulido, as you're referred to in our household, comadre, congratulations. I was elated, as so was Erica, when we found out that you were named Chair of Brooks, a pioneer in every way, and I won't, this is your moment, but I would be remiss if not to say that San Antonio is now seeing a rise of Latina and women leaders, specifically in our utilities. Janie is here, and the two largest development authorities. But you, anyone who wants to know a story of resilience and of character and of triumph needs to study Lorraine Pulido's life. You amaze me. You have since the day I met you. And I just am grateful for your service, and I look forward to your continued stewardship of our community in so many other ways. So congratulations, Lorraine. Councilmember Aldrete Gavito.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations on your new role, Dr. Pulido. When I first met you, I saw the energy and passion that you brought to VIA, you know, and I know of your amazing leadership on the Alamo Colleges Board, all the great things that Councilwoman Dr. Rocha Garcia mentioned. But I think over all of that is, is the notion of what you can see, you can be. You know, and you're inspiring so many other Latinas here in San Antonio to, to take that leadership position and, and that we can do that. You know, we're more than qualified and, and we can fill those positions. So thank you so much for the inspiration that you're setting and the example that you're setting for all of our daughters who, who will follow in your footsteps. And I know that we got to spend some more time last year being in the San Antonio Women Hall of Fame class together. And so you have a long list of accomplishments, and we're all so proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Aldrete Gavito, Councilmember Villagrand.
Thank you, Dr. Pulido. I, I worked with you on, I don't want this to be missed. She did not get here by accident or because who she knows. She worked hard, like most women have to do. And you probably did more than any of those men that sit on the Brooks Board to get to this position. We served on the Brooks Gives Back Board. You, your schedule is completely packed, and, and this is what we have to do. So you're an example for women leaders all over there, but it, it's, it's not easy. It's never easy. And you're here, and I thank the male allies that do sit on that board that are supporting you and moving you forward. And what I'm excited about is that we thought Brooks got things done before. Now with you as Chair, I, the sky's the limit in terms of how we're going to grow and what we're going to do. So thank you so much for saying yes to serve and for continuing to understand the community that we live in and, and never forgetting your Harlandel roots. Thank you.
Never, never.
Thank you. Councilmember Villagrand, Councilmember Cabeo Haberta.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, Lorraine, I just want to thank you for all of the work you've done in our community. I think it's long past due that you're at the top of an organization. I think every organization you're in, you always rise to the top. You give all of us as Latinas inspiration and love, and you uplift us all the time. I'm so grateful to count you as a friend. You're also, everybody knows this, but hilarious, so it's just great to be around you. And I thank you, and I'm super, super proud of you and of the Board for uplifting you in this way. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabeo Haberta, Councilmember Palais.
For a long time, I, I served as the Chair of Brooks City Base. And I got to tell you, you know, people ask me all the time, isn't it, isn't it wonderful to be a City Councilmember? You must have a lot of fun, and it must be really rewarding. And the truth is, is that this position that I have right now is the second most rewarding position I've ever had. The most rewarding is, is being a Chair of Brooks. And one of the, one of the reasons, and you're going to discover this very quickly, and, you know, Jim Campbell and before him, Steve Goldberg, before me, Daryl Byrd, I think all Brooks Chairs agree that Leo Gomez and his staff just make it so easy. And it's not. It's hard, but they just make it look so easy. And the beautiful thing about it is, I think you're going to enjoy the, the reality that is, you get to affect change, not just on that campus, but, you know, for an entire region of the city. And you get to do it quickly. That, that Board is very nimble, and there's a lot thrown at you at one time. And the, the work that, the work, the work that you all do out there, I think, is, is so important, and I can't think of anybody better to, to take the reins over there than you. And so we're impressed, and don't, don't screw it up.
Thank you. Councilmember Palais. Dr. Pulido, congratulations. We are in good hands over at Brooks with your leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, now I'll turn the floor to Councilmember Cabeo Haberta for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I take a special moment to celebrate the life of Dr. Leonard Lawrence. Dr. Lawrence was a pillar of our community for many decades. He passed away on November 23rd of this year. Dr. Lawrence's family is with us this morning. I'd like to invite them to come up to the podium so we can share our condolences as well as our gratitude for the work he's done for our community. As you come up, I welcome his family, Linda Brown, Sherry Lawrence, Maya Lawrence, Colin Lawrence, Bill Kent, Joan Duncan, Isadora Banks, and Vilma Kemp, as well as his wonderful wife, Barbara Lawrence. Also welcome his colleague, Dr. Kenneth Kemp, who happens to be the pastor for Antioch Missionary Baptist Church. Dr. Lawrence was born in 1937 in Indianapolis, Indiana. He joined the Air Force in 1963, where he was a general medical officer. It was during this time in the Air Force he began to see kids who had emotional problems, and that sparked his interest in mental health. He was the first Air Force medical officer who worked specifically in child psychology. He spent nine years of active duty at Wilford Hall and was then offered a faculty position at the newly developing University of Texas Medical School at San Antonio. He spent 33 years on faculty at what is now the UT Health Science Center. He was a Dean of Students for 24 of those 33 years. He served as Clinical Director of the Protestant, Protestant Children's Home, one of three orphanages in San Antonio that were segregated by race and ethnicity. There was an orphanage for black children, one for Latino children, and another for Anglo kids. The Protestant Children's Home eventually became the first children's psychiatric hospital in the state. It turns out, though, at that time, Dr. Lawrence was just getting started. He was President and Chairman of the Board of United Way, and the City of San Antonio just finished their 2023 Giving Campaign, so it's an honor to recognize the innovation that he brought to the organization. He was also President of the National Medical Association, which was a black physicians' organization that was formed at a time when black physicians were excluded from the American Medical Association and also excluded from hospital staff. He was also Chair of the Board of KLRN, Chair of the Texas Youth Commission, which oversees all the juvenile correctional facilities in the state of Texas. He spent 14 years on that Board, appointed and reappointed by Governors Richards, Bush, and Perry. He was also Chair of the San Antonio Area Foundation. We, as a community, are indebted to Dr. Lawrence and his family for his generous energy, spirit, and leadership. We're proud he chose San Antonio, you chose San Antonio, to be home, and we thank your family for sharing him with us. Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you very, very much. I'm just overwhelmed with the outpouring of love that my husband has received. And this is one of the many activities, events that has occurred in his life that certainly just is overwhelming. And I want to thank each and every one of you. He would have been more than proud. He would have spent the entire morning talking about all of the things that he has done for the betterment of San Antonio, the state, and on a national level. And I have asked Reverend Kent, who was a very, very close friend of his, to say a few words in his behalf, and again, I thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilwoman Haberta for this honor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council for recognizing Dr. Leonard Lawrence. And on behalf of Dr. Barbara Lawrence, we are so grateful for the life and legacy of Dr. Lawrence. As you've already heard, he's, was, and still is, a huge, huge personality, a tremendous educator, a well-respected leader in the medical community, as well as a tremendous humanitarian, and he will sorely be missed. But thank you for this wonderful recognition.
Thanks again.
Thank you both. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lawrence. Thank you, Councilmember Cabeo Haberta. And finally, to Councilmember Palais with a point of personal privilege.
Thank you. I'd like to call Maria and, what's, whatever her name is, standing next to you. The, Mayor, colleagues, I want you to know, many months ago, we were all talking about ways of getting the word out about the importance of combating domestic violence. And a friend of mine over at Clear Channel, Mark Rodriguez, stepped up and said, you know, I heard your comments. We want to help. And I said, all right, I'm going to stick Maria Villagomez on you. And Maria, you, you have something pretty exciting to report to us today about the work Clear Channel has, has agreed to do for free. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm here in my capacity as a co-chair for the Collaborative Commission on Domestic Violence. And as Councilmember Palais mentioned, we have partnered as a CCDV with Clear Channel to, who offer to us billboards starting in November 20 of 2023 all the way to the end of October of 2024 at no cost. What you saw on the screen are the, what we are going to be displaying in these billboards. There's a total of eight digital billboards across the city, as well as six static signs. And the goal of this awareness campaign is to ensure that we make the community aware that this is an issue here in San Antonio. At the same time, we want to make sure that those individuals who are experiencing domestic violence, either victims, families, or friends of those individuals, know where to call if there's an emergency, or where to text, because they can text 911, but also where to get resources as well. So thank you to the Council for your continued support in this very important issue. We appreciate, from the city's perspective, your support to expand the services to the victims over the past few years, so we are very thankful. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. From time to time, there comes an individual representing an institution and displays an incredible amount of social responsibility and sensitivity to issues that impact the entire community. This is that moment. So we are incredibly, incredibly thankful and indebted to Clear Channel. So Maria, you say that the offer is just for one year. We'll see about that. Because, because the insidiousness of the issue claims for a sustained effort of education to the entire community. And that is what is necessary to change attitudes. As I have said before you so many times, I am a firm believer that attitudes precede actions. And if we are able to shift the culture and attitude of permissiveness, where we may be in the presence of domestic violence, experiencing it or perpetrating it, and do not understand the full impact on the community and the children, then we are missing out on this educational effort. But this is what it takes. So to Clear Channel, thank you. Thank you very much. We will never know how many lives will be saved, how many perpetrators will think twice, but we know that it will impact the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the hard work, Maria. Please pass our thanks on to Judge Monique Diaz also, and everybody else on the Collaborative Commission. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Palais. And if it's a negotiation between the business and Maria, I say advantage Maria. Congratulations to, to all of you on that, and a huge thanks to our community business, Clear Channel Outdoor, for, for the cooperation on this. That's, that's pretty big, big announcement, so thank you all very much. All right, we're going to move now into our business agenda. We have a few individual items. Obviously, our rate request is item number four. We'll take that up now, so item number four.
Item number four is an ordinance approving an increase of 4.25% to the CPS Energy Electric and Gas Base Rates System Average effective February 1st, 2024. Tariff amendments to implement the rate adjustments and amendments to the affordability discount program for qualifying low-income customers and authorizing a regulatory asset for pension and OPEB expenses.
All right, Ben, I think the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. As the City Clerk outlined, this item is an ordinance for consideration of a 4.25% system-wide base rate increase for CPS Energy. It would also allow them to establish a regulatory asset to deal with accounting adjustments that happen related to, to the Government Accounting Standards Board. These are non-cash adjustments that happen. It'll help them manage the non-cash part of the rate model. We don't have long presentations this morning. CPS Energy is going to go through a brief presentation in a minute, but I just want to recap a little bit of the process. So we began the process on the city side on November 8th in B Session. During that B Session, CPS Energy presented the proposed rate case and went over the elements that are driving the need to increase rates for the utility. We had a second meeting, special meeting, on November 30th, where city staff provided a briefing on our review of the rate case. We gave you our recommendations on that rate case. We also provided, in conjunction with that meeting, a detailed written report of our review. Now during these meetings, we've talked about CPS Energy's increased investment in a number of key areas that support resiliency and reliability. Things like increased vegetation management, increased plant maintenance, and increasing automation within the overall CPS utility system. We also talked about the need for them to invest a significant amount in technology, replacing an outdated, not system, but systems, and moving to a more modern enterprise resource platform that not only is important and key for the utility, but will open up opportunities for new products and services for CPS for new products and services for CPS Energy customers. Additionally, we talked about the fact that they're beginning the transition to a newly approved generation portfolio. We went through that in some detail, but they're beginning to make investments as they move towards this new generation portfolio. Based on our comprehensive review, we are recommending approval of this item. Before I turn it over to CPS Energy, I do want to thank my team. They're led by Russell Huff and Jeff Pullen. The team is over here to my right, and they include also Morris Harris, Ben Cadena, and Pamela Monroe. I just want to thank the team for all of your work. I know this is a lot of, a lot of work that we do in a very short period of time, so I just want to thank them for their work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rudy Garza, President and CEO of CPS Energy, that'll open up the presentation for them. Rudy?
Mayor, councilmembers, Rudy Garza, President and CEO of CPS Energy, thank you for your diligence throughout this process. I think you all have asked thoughtful and important questions, and I look forward to today's dialogue. I want to start by thanking my chair, Janie Gonzalez, behind me and my vice chair, Dr. Francine Romelo. We've got great leadership on the Board of CPS Energy right now that are pushing us to execute in the way the community has asked us to, and we can't do that without their leadership and their direction as well. So thank you all for your support. In our business, you're never standing still. You're either moving forward or you're falling behind. After two years of collaborating with the Rate Advisory Committee and various other stakeholder groups to rebuild trust, we've listened to feedback and made responsive changes to be the utility our community has asked us to be. A few comments I want to make today. Two years ago, with your input and support, we put ourselves on a path to stabilizing our utility. So thank you for the support you've given us over the last two years. It's really, really helped. When we asked for approval of our 3.5% base rate increase, we were transparent in establishing a schedule for smaller, more focused rate requests to support the investments needed to serve our community. Those investments are outlined in Vision 2027, which is our comprehensive strategic plan, which highlights our operational priorities and financial discipline. Vision 2027 was developed from extensive community input, and now we are building a roadmap to guide us to 2050 that will include stakeholder input every step of the way. Our team is in the community every single day, working to help our customers, including those most in need, connecting, listening, and engaging. The answer to supporting our customers is more partnership and resources. Cutting investment to critical infrastructure hurts our customers, especially those most vulnerable. Investment in our gas and electric utilities is an investment in our customers, our employees, many of which are in the gallery behind me from both the electric and gas business. The economic success of our community is impacted, and in advancing our energy transition to cleaner technologies, which supports the city's cap goals. It's ultimately an investment for and in our collective energy future. San Antonio is one of the fastest-growing large cities in the country. Virtually every part of our lives is powered by energy. We can do this together, all of it, in a reasonable and timely manner. Invest in our future. Help more customers with needed assistance. Support the growing and challenging needs of our community. I speak every day about our one-team mindset at CPS Energy. None of what we want to accomplish can be done without you, our regulator, showing leadership for our community. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Corey Kaczynski, our chief financial officer, to walk us through today's presentation.
Thank you, Rudy, and good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. As Rudy mentioned, I'll echo, thank you very much for your time and input over the past several months. Very much appreciated that. I'll also echo a big thank you to Eric Walsh and Ben Gorzal and the Office of Public Utilities for their collaboration over the last couple of months, and really over the last couple of years, and as Rudy mentioned, to our chair and vice chair who are here. So as Rudy alluded to in his comments, you know, this discussion really is about the future and looking ahead. And as the agenda, which we'll move to lays out, is a brief presentation that'll recap some of the same items we've previously discussed. There you go. So this rate request is really a continuation of everything that we've talked about the last couple of years, looking ahead. We've said this before, this isn't a decision that we take lightly when we come forward to the community. Our teams have been deliberate in their analysis, and ultimately, we've provided here today a recommendation that aims to meet the expectations of our community and the conversations we've had over the last couple of years. The highlights are captured on this slide. Very briefly, to recap, the request today is a 4.25% base rate increase. That equates to about $85 million in annual revenue for CPS Energy. The approximate average dollar bill impact for consumers is about $4.45, and we've talked about this. For those on the affordability discount program, which is an income-based program, the impact would be a little less than $2.50, and I'll speak a little bit more about that later. As we've also spoken about previously, I'll recap for you where the $85 million can benefit the community, and really benefit the community in the spaces that our customers have asked us to focus on, which makes a lot of sense. Overwhelmingly, we've heard our customers talk about reliable and resiliency from their perspective as being the primary thing they care about, and the investment that we've talked about doing and applying really goes towards that. As an example, over the last two years, we've invested $90 million just in reinforcing our power plants and reinforcing our lines, and dollars here are to continue that investment so that we can sustain that reliable service. Some of the efforts that we do out in the community, customers can see, but a lot of what we do, customers can't see. It's behind the scenes, but they can feel it through the reliability of their service. Customers have also talked about technology, and technology that enables customers to interface with us in the manner that they would like to. They've also talked about new products and new services that we've discussed here at the DIAS and that we are open to, but the investment we're making in technology will help enable us to get those items across the finish line in the coming years. And behind the scenes, ensuring that the technology that is controlling the power flow across our community, that is controlling the power plants in our community, is safe and protected from threats is also an element of this investment. In terms of system growth, we all benefit from a power grid that is upgraded, from a community that has enough generation to support all of its customers. And this isn't just new customers. This is about also reinvesting in older areas when they grow, and reinvestment is necessary. We all benefit from supporting system growth. And ultimately, our service to our customers is a function of us having the folks that are trained up and can do the job. As we mentioned several times in the past, and was discussed last week as well, as an example, it takes three to five or more years for folks to be trained up to be a journeyman out in the field. Folks don't just show up at CPS Energy, get in a bucket truck, and get up and work on the lines in extreme condition. It's a dangerous job. It takes time and a lot of training, and, you know, we have a lot of impending retirements with folks who've been doing that work for two decades or more. So getting that pipeline filled in, getting folks in the door and trained up now, it continues to be an area of focus for our growing community, just as an example. So didn't want to spend too much time there, but I did want to recap, you know, the areas where our customers can see and feel a difference with this investment that we're proposing So this slide is really just a recap of the various different engagement opportunities we've had to go out and talk to our customers. I will note that, you know, every day, whether we're doing a rate request or not, we've got dozens of folks that are out in the community, trying to hook people up with programs that they may qualify for, or just informing them of different information. And so with respect to, you know, the last couple of months here, these are just some examples of the hard-working efforts that our teams have done, whether it be town halls that we've, you know, been at. I've been at a few, whether it be social media, mailings, things of that nature. We really want to do our best to get out and talk to folks about what we're doing and the benefits of this rate request. This next slide really just expands a little bit on the conversation we had talked about in terms of our affordability discount program. Just as a reminder, this is an income-based program, and the current discount on customers who qualify is $16.14 for combined electric and gas customer. What we're proposing is two things. One is actually increasing or adding an eligibility criteria, which we talked about last time, for severe energy burden. And additionally, for folks that do qualify, increasing that discount amount by a little over $2.20, so that the discount is now $18.36. I will note, as I mentioned just a second ago, there are a lot of non-income-based programs we have for customers as well, whether it be payment plans or installment plans of some kind, or if it's, when they call us up, if they don't qualify, hooking them up with maybe the food bank or rental assistance and things of that nature. So it's more than just help on the utility bill, but this is one of the primary elements that we have from a mechanism perspective that we can use to support our customers. And again, over the last couple of years, we've remained open to input on ways we can expand that outreach to our community, and we always remain open to input on better ways we can do outreach and reach out to our community. As Ben alluded to, and as was mentioned, the other element of this recommendation is a regulatory asset for accounting purposes. The main punchline really is that this approval for regulatory asset, different than the one from two years ago, this does not increase any cost to CPS Energy, and ultimately, customers are not seeing an increase from, in their bill, from this regulatory asset. The approach that we are using the regulatory asset for, we have spent the last year benchmarking this approach with peer utilities. We have determined that is a best practice that other utilities have used. We've reviewed this with our external auditor as well, if we are, if we get the approval and can use it next year. And as Ben had mentioned in his presentation last week, this ties back to a recommendation that came out of two years ago for CPS Energy to look into using this regulatory asset for the purposes laid out. And so at the end of the day, we're allowed to use regulatory accounting as an entity that we are, but it does require city council approval for us to execute that. So you've seen this slide several times, and I'll just recap it very briefly. It supports the conversation that we've been having about being focused on the future and having a multi-year rate plan that supports a multi-year strategy that we've discussed with our community over the last two years. That discussion is consistent two years ago, as it is today, and you can see from the slide there that the forecast out in fiscal '27 for us is up to 2.5%. But again, as we've said before, all forecasts are subject to, you know, change based on actual performance outcomes. I will note, just to clarify, the recommendation today is for support of the 4.25% for fiscal '25, which would be effective on a calendar next February 1. So just to wrap up a few points, you know, we've talked about this, but since our last rate request, you know, we've delivered on a lot of the commitments that we've talked about at city council and with our board, and we've, you know, continued to strive to be transparent in our conversations about what we're doing, what the plans are and the funding needs are for CPS Energy to execute upon the things that the customers have asked us to do. We had the conversation with our community around the generation plan in a very public fashion. We also had a conversation around rate design as well, and we'll continue to see community input on those topics. I will point out, the 4.25% rate request is below the original 5.5% that we had projected a couple of years ago, but nevertheless, we believe that this recommendation will continue to ensure the financial stability for your asset, for our asset, CPS Energy. And I'll note, as I said a second ago, you know, we continue to be focused on customer assistance where we can, and we continue to remain open to any input and recommendations from the community on how we can, we can help. So with that, Mayor, I'll close my comments, and again, thank you, and thank the council for their time, and we'll remain open for questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Corey, Rudy, and Ben for the presentation. Before we get into council discussion, we do have folks signed up to speak, so I'll call folks in order of sign-up. Individuals have three minutes. Groups have up to nine. So we'll call first Terry Burns. Mr. Burns, you'll be followed by Jack Finger.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Terry Burns, past chair of the Alamo Share Club. My colleague Alan Montemayor could not be here today. And we oppose the rate increase, not because they don't need the money, but because they haven't met previous promises. So two years and $50 million spent on IT investment, I have not resulted, they say, in the ability for them to do real rate reform and rate restructuring. And so before you approve another rate increase today, I urge you to please insist that prior to returning again in two years, as you know they will, they must agree and guarantee that, number one, they will resurrect the aborted Rate Advisory Committee; number two, work with an independent energy expert consumer advocate; number three, work with a resurrected municipal utility council committee for ongoing oversight; and number four, create and do real reform and restructuring of our rates in the city of San Antonio. Because we know, as I've just passed out from a previous SARS-RAC committee consultant, an expert in water rates, but it applies equally with electricity here, bad rates cause a lot of burden to our community, and we've seen that with the huge numbers of delinquent accounts CPS is dealing with. So they need to change the rate structure to get away from most of these problems, though still, and I applaud their expansion of assistance programs, but all of those programs are somewhat, you know, Band-Aids to bad rate problems. So please, in your vote today, insist that these four elements be absolutely begun in January and moving forward over the next two years, so when you have another decision in two years, there will be good rate restructuring done at that time. And I don't see here mention of Ben Gorzal's idea, anti-democratic idea, having you vote today on rate increases two years from now, stealing the rights of, from future council members and future ratepayers to give input on this important decision. I'm glad that won't happen, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Joe, I'm sorry, Jack Finger. Mr. Finger, you'll be followed by Joe Urazari.
Mayor Nuremberg and other members of our illustrious San Antonio City Council. For the record, my name is Jack M. Finger, and this item about a tax increase, I say tax increase, you say, oh, no, it's just a rate increase. Uh-uh. If the rates that you raise for us on the ratepayers goes into your city treasury, eventually, that's a tax increase. Now, what exactly is this tax increase going to do here? Well, let's look at the basics here. CPS, City Public Service, our utility, has a $3 billion budget, $3 billion, twice as much as our San Antonio city, city, city of San Antonio budget. So what's it going to do here? You want to, we already, already, what are we getting from City Public Service? The, let's see, there we go, $421 million in rebates from the 14% CPS budget. That's what we get every year, plus the $20 million windfall that we have from the summer. And so what does that add up to? $441 million, million extra dollars already going to our city treasury from us, the rate payer. $441 million, million extra dollars already going to our city treasury from us, the ratepayers. And you still need 85 million more from us? Do we say a resounding? No! No! No, don't do this! Why? It's stupid! Yes! Why is it stupid? You, what's it going for? Well, you say you need to retire the, what is it, the Dealey Plant? We understand it had good 20 more years of service in it. What, for what? Solar and wind sources. Solar, when the sun doesn't shine, and wind, then the wind doesn't blow. Winter storm year we had a couple of years ago, you know why the wind, the propellers didn't run? They froze up! What was needed to get them going? Fossil fuels, oil! Yes. And pension plans? Well, excuse me, all of this should have been taken care of in the budget already. It shows a lack of, it shows mismanagement on both the CPS side and your side for taking all this money. No, I'm sorry, and you want to get, one again, 2025, another 4%, and 2027, another 5%? Why are you nickel-and-diming us like this?
Thank you, Mr. Finger. Joe, is there, Urazari? Mr. Urazari, you'll be followed by Diana Lopez.
Good morning, Mayor Nierenberg and council members, and thank you for letting us speak to you today about the CPS Energy rate increase proposal. I'm Joe Urazari, and Chief Marketing Officer for Robert Kissner, and I'm also the incoming chairman of the Board of the North San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, and it's on the North San Antonio Chamber's behalf that I speak today. Before Thanksgiving, we sent you a letter of our support for the 4.25% increase proposed, and we remain committed to this position and strongly encourage your support and approval today. CPS Energy remains essential to our community's economic success and our quality of life. Our energy affordability and reliability set us apart from other communities in Texas. Our region's expected population growth could overwhelm our infrastructure if we fail to prepare. Investing in power generation, resiliency, technology, security, and talent helps safeguard this asset and our economic vitality. As stated in our letter, we recognize that CPS remains a good steward of our trust. The proposed increase is less than originally projected. Energy bills will remain among the most affordable in Texas. As business leaders, our members understand that economic success requires hard decisions. Success also requires us to invest and protect in our strengths. And most certainly for this community, our power infrastructure is a strength and an asset. CPS leadership has done its due diligence with this recommendation and must continue to address this region's growing energy infrastructure demands. For these reasons, we urge your support of CPS Energy's proposed increase. We thank you, City of San Antonio's council and mayor. We thank the Board of CPS Energy and to Rudy Garza and his leadership team for the service you do for our community. The North San Antonio Chamber appreciates your partnership, and we appreciate weighing in on this matter today.
Thank you, Mr. Urazari. Diana Lopez? Ms. Lopez, you'll be followed by Betty Eckert.
Buenos dias, good morning. I'm going to start my first 30 seconds. The movement to ensure our people have basic needs is international, and so I want to take these first 30 seconds for a moment of silence for the people of Palestine. Centro por la Justicia, Southwest Workers Union, we stand in solidarity with people's right to, for basic needs and necessities. We call for the alignment and calls for ceasefire and ending friendship with city status with Tel Aviv. And with that, you've all received almost 2,000 postcards collectively, if not many more, calls, requests, and conversations from our community. Y'all know about the negative impacts that the rates will be having in our community. We work with people every single month, calling our offices, asking for assistance, and asking for work. This is a dangerous time to risk our community health and well-being. As a representative body, we urge you not to vote for a rate increase until there is a city council consumer advocate, a fair rate structure, and a larger public process so that we can ensure that the voices of community residents and their needs are being met as well. And in the spirit of the holidays, I will leave you with a jingle that I hope stays in your head for all of the month. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. CPS is raising your rates. They're making a list and checking it twice. Gonna find out who's not paying on their lights. They'll charge you when you're sleeping and charge you when you're awake. They'll only give a break to the largest businesses. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. CPS is raising your rates. This is the MJ version. CPS is raising your rates. CPS is raising your rates. Have a good holidays. I'm not a singer, but I love to sing, and I love Christmas jingles. I hope you have a great day, and I hope you vote on behalf of our community and our rates. You've heard all of our statements before, so this is a more creative and festive version to share our statements. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Betty Eckert? Ms. Eckert, you'll be followed by Erin Agoyo.
Thank you. Thank you, council and mayor, and Eric Walsh, and all of you that are involved in a big decision today. I think that this needs to be taken back, and we need to take another look at it. The programs that CPS is offering to help people is not working. When people are treated like second-class citizens to go and get the help because we have an overpriced utility bill already, I'm asking all of you to go back and take, because you don't know. And I know that you don't, and you don't have time to know all of that, and I'm aware of that. I spent hours on it. I called yesterday. I found out you could go to Zazamar Street to get help with your bill. Really? And staff is waiting for you. How many in San Antonio know that there's a building on Zazamar that you can go to if you have transportation to get to, to get help with the bill? I'm asking you to reconsider. CPS needs to be lowered, not raised higher. The next you will be asking for raises for city council and staff. Why? Because you need the money, just like the rest of San Antonio. We made number three in the United States with, in San Antonio, with food insecurity. You can talk to Eric Cooper, he can tell you all about it. It's not enough. So people are doing without food to do what? To pay a utility bill. They have to, because if they don't pay a utility bill, they won't have lights. The next thing they won't have, they go against some of our codes, and they'll be out of their house, and they will be homeless. I hope that I haven't come down here and made a cloud over the council after all these acolots that I saw you present this morning, and all these many people that do so much in San Antonio. Thanks to all of them. It's appreciated. There's more of us that do a lot of things too, Mayor. And before you leave, you need to recognize them. You need to know what they do. And unfortunately, this council doesn't know, and they don't know these programs, and they don't understand what's happening in CPS. I really hope that you'll reconsider. Don't vote on it today. Learn first, and if you're right and I'm wrong, then okay. I want to thank you all. Merry Christmas to all of you, and this is not a very good present to the issue of San Antonio.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eckert.
You're very welcome.
Erin Agoyo? Mr. Agoyo, you'll be followed by Peter Onofre.
Good morning. My name is Erin Agoyo. I'm the San Antonio Advocacy Organizer at Move Texas, and I'm here today to urge city council to vote no on the proposed 4.25% rate increase being proposed by CPS Energy. We should not raise residential rates without equitable rate reform and the hiring of a consumer advocate to protect customers during the rate increase process. The rate structure system that currently exists, which benefits the highest energy users, who pay less on the dollar for their energy than many residential users, is deeply inequitable and is deeply overdue for reform. I know I've spoken to all of you about this before. I'm not saying anything new this time around, but the fact remains that this is a difficult, it creates difficulty for families. I've told you all about how I've had the experience of having my lights turned off, and it's a really helpless feeling. And in a city with as wide a wealth gap as ours, with so many customers already behind on bills and on payment plans, we should be doing everything we can to prevent further inequality, and this rate increase would serve to accomplish the opposite. So now, right before the holidays, we're talking about an increase with no meaningful rate structure reform, no current rate advisory committee, and no consumer advocate. So I'm urging you again to vote no on this rate increase. No rate hikes without rate reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agoyo. Peter Onofre? Mr. Onofre, you'll be followed by Jeff Webster.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I am Peter Onofre, and I have served the, I've served District 4 as a representative on the CPS Rate Advisory Committee, and I'd like to thank you Councilwoman Rocha Garcia for entrusting me with that appointment. And it also allowed me the opportunity to be a part of the recent rate request working group. Very early on in my time on the Rack, I decided to dedicate my efforts to work with CPS in the city to minimize the impact of impending rate increases and extreme weather on our most vulnerable. Thank you, councilman Courage, for your leadership on the MUC and your support of a proposed STEP LMI working group. And I want to thank Rudy Garza for actually creating a CPS working group to provide feedback and development of a new STEP program over the past year. And special thanks to all the staff that has worked with us across the board at all these levels. After reviewing the rate requests through the working group or with the working group, I support the rate increase with great expectations for our most vulnerable. I provided the following recommendation to the CPS Board of Trustees for your consideration today. I recommend the development of a strategic resiliency plan to increase resiliency and minimize bill impact on low- and moderate-income customers over the next five years. The strategic plan would focus on a holistic approach of incorporating energy efficiency, weatherization, housing stock sustainability, environmental, and social resiliency in disadvantaged communities. The plan would enhance CPS and Costa's Neighborhood and Housing Services and the Office Sustainability's collaborative work by strategically utilizing the Resiliency Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Fund and other funding sources to build capacity of trusted, community-based organizations and projects. An important component of this plan is capacity building of CBOs to provide resiliency navigators that would inform, empower, and navigate residents through available resources and services. Mayor, I believe this work would truly leverage bipartisan infrastructure bill and IRA funding opportunities by strategically prioritizing the most vulnerable. The plan would build on the great work that CPS and the city have begun and create a blueprint for community resiliency, similar to the SHIP and the most recent Metro Health Crime Prevention Strategic Plan. We all know community engagement is critical to the success of any plan. We've begun the work of engaging and empowering the Quintana and Southwest communities as they prepare to participate in the upcoming SA tomorrow Southwest Community Plan in 2024. I close with this. We're not asking or looking for a handout, but we're looking for an opportunity to be empowered. To whom much is given, much is required. Thank you for your attention and consideration of this work.
Thank you, Mr. Onofre. Jeff Webster?
Good morning, Mayor and council. It's a privilege to be here today. My name is Jeff Webster. I am actually the fifth day-on-the-job CEO and president of the Greater Chamber of San Antonio Commerce, but I want to say it's a privilege to be back in this room with you today. And I want to say, you know, these conversations are difficult. I do have the privilege of one time sitting on this dais and having to make decisions like this, so I understand how difficult it is to always evaluate rate increases on our citizens and our business community. It's difficult. There's no two ways about it, and we would all prefer not to have increases. But our chamber, our Board of Investors, our Executive Committee, our public policy, all looked at this, and the Greater San Antonio Chamber supports the rate increase, not because we want to pay more, but because we believe in economic development, we believe in resiliency. I believe in being warm on a cold day and cool on these very hot days we had. I also believe it's going to impact our ability in the future to attract new businesses and to retain businesses. So I understand how complicated this decision is, and so I thank you for taking true deliberation on what you're going to consider. I understand there's conversations about the second rate increase, Mayor, and I had shared with different council members the idea of you can set a rate, and we can say not to exceed or whatever, but I believe the responsibility falls on this council and our friends at CPS, or SARS when it's their time, to always do what they can to evaluate our own budgets with each organization to find ways to cut costs to minimize those rates. And I know that that's something this council does, and I encourage you to continue to do that, to find ways to reduce expenditures and other costs so we can take these rates increases down to affect both families and businesses. Managing that is very important as we look into the future. But I want to be very clear. The Greater San Antonio Chamber supports this increase. We think it's needed. We have worked closely with Rudy and his staff, so we ask for your support of that. If I can have a moment of personal privilege, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say two things. Number one, I applaud you for the people you recognized and celebrated here today as you did ceremonial. Some amazing citizens in this city, so thank you for taking time to do that. All great stories, great histories, and I appreciate that. Number two, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reach out to you on the campaign you acknowledged today on domestic violence. We would like to work with that group to make sure there's appropriate messaging coming from our organization. As you can imagine, because you guys get a lot of those emails and things we send out, we would be willing to participate and help coordinate and make sure our membership understands the importance of this issue and fighting domestic violence. So please have, whoever's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, reach out to me, and we will work with you in supporting the fight against domestic violence in this city and in our community. With that, thank you very much. Happy holidays, and I'm not going to sing you a song. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Deborah Ponse? Ms. Ponse, you'll be followed by Celine Garcia.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Deborah Ponse. I'm with Public Citizen, Climate Justice Advocate for the City of San Antonio, or organizer. I'm here because I have no doubt that this proposed rate increase will damage the financial wellness of families, businesses, and individuals all over this city, and I'm asking this group to slow down and decide if every option has been truly considered. I also think that it's time for our leaders to take a second, third, and fourth look at this packaged rate request from CPS Energy that will be presented today. Is there a rule that says that we have to accept the package as have to accept the package as a whole and as it's presented? We all want CPS Energy to get their computers replaced. None of us want CPS Energy employees dealing with 2002 Windows computers. But let's be clear about this situation. Computer replacements are one-time expenses, and this rate increase is indefinite. We will pay for this increase. Our kids will pay for this increase, and our grandkids. We will be paying for the 2024 CPS computer replacement till infinity. And in four to five years, another CPS Energy Board or and staff will be here requesting another base rate increase to replace the computers. Asking for a base race in change for tech support, you know, that's logical because that's an ongoing expense. Cybersecurity, also very logical, ongoing expense. There are one-time expenses all over this package rate request. But we're only given a few weeks to review it and then make a decision that will impact San Antonians indefinitely. Can you use your power to pull items out of this package request? Can you ask for more time to review Harvard's idea or one like it and figure out a way to fund this upgrade of computers in 2024, making sure our hard-working CPS Energy employees can still get the computer upgrades they deserve? Can we ask CPS Energy why there isn't a fund already set up in their books for regular upgrades on computers like on equipment like computers? Can that be required now so that in five years, we're not up here battling our own conscience about raising the base rate for community because in comparison to other cities, San Antonio pays so much less? We should be proud of that fact and continue this and be leaders in our state for that. Each of you represents us. Your elected duty is to represent the will of the people and not of your own will. Even if you do not 100% agree with your constituents, it's your duty to vote how the majority of your voters ask. And today, I ask you to please don't stand up there and say, I know nobody wants this rate increase, but we have to make tough decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Ponse. Celine Garcia? Ms. Garcia, you'll be followed by Martin Gutierrez.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Selene Garcia. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Elena Garcia. And I just wanted... I... With Southwest Workers Union, we've been knocking on doors. Me personally, we've been knocking on doors, talking to people. And I was one of the persons that was filling out the postcards that were sent out to you. Maybe that's why they had similar handwritings. But it was just information that was put into Minivan. But today, I also wanted to read some of those postcards out loud that are just proof that this will impact very real people and that it will impact heavily on the most vulnerable. The first one says, "Stop the greed. We pay enough, and we're tired. Do your job, or you'll be voted out," by Nicole Martinez. "We have to give up on certain things. We need to make sure our power doesn't get disconnected since it costs even more money to have it reconnected." I mean, we're on a budget. "Stop raising the rates," by Maria Vazquez. "Stop raising CPS rates without the people's consent, especially on the people that are already conserving energy," by Joanna Hernandez. "Dear fellows, as a member of the community, a price increase for CPS is not doable on our income decreases year. Please consider," by Anthony Talerchio. "Dear fellows, via gran, in today's economy, we're already struggling to get by, especially with with the way..." "Please don't raise prices. We're already struggling to pay," by Angelina Gabor. "No price increases. We are on a payment plan already. No increase. I'm on a fixed income," by Richard Doodly. "We're on a fixed income, and this increase will be very difficult for our family," by Rosemary Cediano. "I'm retired, and I do everything I can to save electricity, but my bill is always so high, no matter what I do. Historically, our elected representatives have failed to deliver our promises. Please care about us and vote against the rate hikes." "I work three jobs, and I had to call CPS yesterday for a payment plan. They should be putting their profits into our struggling community instead of asking for more," by Raoul Sanchez. "My mom is in hospice, and CPS..." And CPS rates have gotten higher. At no time we have... Sorry, the handwriting's real bad on this one. "We're on a fixed income," by David and Cindy Gonzalez. "I'm already struggling making CPS payments now," by A. B. Tovar. And then there's one specifically that I wanted to highlight. "I just got off the phone with CPS because I had to make a payment arrangement. One person in the household is disabled and in a hospital bed. There are kids here, but they don't care," as in CPS. "We're already behind. Please don't make it even harder, and don't raise the rates," by Norma Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Martin Gutierrez. Mr. Gutierrez, you'll be followed by Meredith
Good morning, Mayor Nierenberg, members of the San Antonio City Council. For those of you who don't know, my name is Martin Gutierrez, and I serve as the Director of Government Relations for the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So we're comprised of more than 900 members, the majority of which are small locally-owned businesses. And today, I'm here to express our strong support for this rate increase. We strongly believe the proposed rate increase balances the necessary investments that CPS Energy must make to remain financially strong while maintaining some of the lowest utility rates in Texas. Not one of our members likes rate increases, but they do like and want affordable, reliable power that is essential for their continuity of their business operations. This rate increase is necessary to ensure CPS Energy can continue to provide affordable, reliable power and drive job creation and economic growth in San Antonio. While we are supportive of the rate increase, we are concerned about the impact on small businesses, especially in this post-pandemic era. This rate increase will be another challenge they face, which will directly impact their bottom line and, for some, result in increased operational cost. Furthermore, we implore the City Council to continue to have exploratory discussions around reducing the city's 14% of gross revenue payments from CPS Energy while not significantly impacting city services. We understand this won't directly lead to reduced rates, but it may lower the amounts of future rate increases, but most importantly, allow CPS to reinvest money in their operations, which would support CPS Energy and resiliency, reliability, technology, and security projects. And these reinvestment in funds will return even more benefits to our community for generations to come. With these considerations, the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber is proud to support the CPS Energy proposed rate increase of 4.25%. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Meredith McGuire?
Before we give our statement, we would like to take a few seconds to honor those 20,000 and more that have been killed in Palestine by Israel's military forces. We are here as San Antonio Justice for Palestine and members of the San Antonio community who have been fighting relentlessly for climate democracy in our city. We've been working tirelessly to urge City Council to vote no on this current rate hike and prioritize their constituents over businesses. The current structure benefits currently high-energy users, including defense contractors like Boeing, Lockheed Martin, and Elbit, at the expense of residential ratepayers. CPS provides subsidized rates to these businesses, encouraging them to operate in San Antonio while they produce weapons of mass destruction. One of the weapons of genocide that go beyond these defense contractors are the discriminant control of infrastructure. At any moment, Israel can decide to shut off telecommunications in Gaza, forcing Palestinians to endure their genocide in blackness. Even prior to October 7th, Israel could take the decision to provide only eight hours of electricity per day to residents. Palestinians cannot keep fresh food in the fridge without consistent access to electricity. Palestinian students can't focus on their education, unable to read in the dark.
You must stay on topic.
I am on topic. Palestinian elders cannot be guaranteed that their medical...
CPS Energy, ma'am.
People in Palestine cannot live full lives without consistent and consistent access to electricity, and neither can people in San Antonio who are struggling to pay their bills. From San Antonio to Palestine, we are seeing people consistently struggle in desperation for consistent access to electricity. And City Council has the current opportunity to support this grassroots fight and vote no on this proposed rate increase. This would be the second year, and this would be the second rate hike in less than two years, if passes. And activists have been approaching y'all for months, trying to get action, and we are met with nothing but failure. And the same failure extends to San Antonio Justice for Palestine. As for eight weeks, we have been trying to push a ceasefire proclamation to no success. At this point, your constituents are wondering, where does the priorities of City Council lie? Where do y'all's interests lie? With businesses? With Lockheed Martin? With Boeing? With Elbit? Or with your constituents? So we urge y'all to wipe the blood off of your hands finally and vote no on this proposed rate hike. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abusad. All right, that's everyone who signed up to speak this evening, or excuse me, this morning on item number four. So we'll get right into discussion. Let me just start, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues before I ask for a motion. First, thank you to CPS Energy staff and leadership. I want to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues on the board, Chair Jenny Gonzalez, along with Vice Chair Dr. Francine Romero, who are here. I also want to thank my colleagues for the discussions over the past few weeks. These decisions are not made in a vacuum, nor are they made behind closed doors. CPS Energy is an essential community asset owned by the public, and we have a collective responsibility to maintain it. Our job, quite simply, is to keep the lights on affordably and resiliently. This is nothing that we take lightly, and nobody ever delights contrary to what might be out there in raising rates. But to keep up with demand, to also bring on and meet the demands of capacity increases sustainably, efficiently, and affordably, we must help our utility galvanize against future cyber threats and bring all of its infrastructure into the 21st century. This is a relatively small rate increase, but at the end of the day, San Antonians will still enjoy one of the lowest rates in the country. That is a goal and an outcome, and it is one that we are achieving with this action today. It's time to invest in our utilities so it can be modernized, better equipped, and better prepared to meet the demands and needs of our residents. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion on item number four.
I move to approve. Mayor?
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval of item four. We'll go now into discussion. Councilmember Aldereta Gavito.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to CPS for the presentation. My main concern with CPS's energies CPS Energy's proposed rate increase has been regarding the impact on our financially insecure residents. I'm especially concerned about the effects on our older adults on a fixed income. I'm also concerned about the single mother raising three children or our hospitality workers in the city that in a city that relies on tourism, who are already struggling to make ends meet. On the other hand, I do get concerned that if we don't increase CPS's resiliency now, what happens if we experience another event like Winter Storm Yuri? Or what happens if San Antonio has an ice storm similar to what Austin experienced last winter? Thousands of Austin residents... Hold on one second. Give me a second. Thousands of Austin residents were left without power. Schools were shut down, lives were disrupted, and many folks missed out on earning wages as a result. This was due to an infrastructure not ready to handle these weather events. So what I'm pushing for is a solution where our vulnerable folks would not feel overburdened by these rate increases. So with that, I have a few questions for Rudy and CPS team. How many folks are currently enrolled in the Affordable Discount Program, also known as ADP?
Councilwoman, we currently have 65,000 customers enrolled.
Okay, how many residents are eligible?
Approximately 140,000.
Okay, so if 65,000 are enrolled, but 140,000 qualify, there are about 70,000 residents who are missing out on these programs, which could save them hundreds of dollars per year, correct?
Correct. And I'll note as part of the presentation, the increase that we have put in there, we estimate it's an extra 15,000 folks on top of that, just FYI.
Okay. So, so moving on, am I correct in understanding that residents receiving ADP would now have a new expanded discount kick-in, which would total which would total a $2.22 discount for combined gas and electric electricity per month?
Yes, that's the incremental amount. And the total on the bill would be $18.36 in aggregate. So it goes up from 16 to that $18 amount.
And the proposed average rate increase is estimated to be around $4.45 per month. Therefore, with a discount of $2.22 per month, they would essentially see their overall rate increase cut in half.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. I also think we need to raise the qualifying guidelines for the ADP and REAP, the Residential Energy Assistance Partnership. From our earlier discussions last week, only residents who make up 125% or below the federal poverty line are eligible for ADP. So a single mother raising three kids and earning $31,500 a year before taxes presently would not qualify. Rudy, who is responsible for raising the ADP income qualification to include residents like those who make 150% or below of the federal poverty line?
Councilwoman, that's a conversation we've been having here for, you know, a few weeks now. We've heard you loud and clear. That's the CPS Energy responsibility. Our board has heard you as well. And in our conversation on Monday, our board was clear that they're interested in us going down that road. So we're going to be looking at the eligibility requirements for both ADP and the REAP fund to ensure that we maximize the amount of participation that we can get.
Okay. Yeah. And the reason I'm pushing on that is because a senior citizen on a fixed income of $1,600 per month should be able to qualify for assistance in our present economy. So in conclusion, what I'd like to do and see worked on are two things. First, for CPS to make a plan to enroll more eligible residents into the CPS...
Yes, ma'am. It is. And we can schedule accordingly within the first 90 days of 2024 to come back to council.
Okay. And Rudy, when can we expect to hear back from CPS on raising the rates? Ideally, I would like to have that ready to go before the proposed rate increase goes into effect on February 1st.
Yeah. So as we expand, you know, as the rate increase goes into effect on February 1, the pool would increase at that point. Now, you know, it takes us probably a good year, year and a half to fill up all those slots. You know, we're out in the community every day, getting people signed up. So that eligibility criteria, we'll get that worked on. We'll get a memo over to our count to our board, and we'll share that with you so that you feel good about where we're at. But we're... We heard you loud and clear.
Thank you. I want to thank CPS for your willingness to work with me on this. With these new parameters for eligibility, we could potentially assist an additional 35,000 residents for a total of 180,000 residents and help them navigate this rate increase. It shows our shared commitment to help our most vulnerable and financially insecure residents while also ensuring our city's infrastructure is reliable and resilient. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Aldereta Gavito, Councilmember Courage.
Thank you, Mayor. I think all of us would say, none of us are secure or safe without energy. And so this is a key aspect of a city government's responsibility when we are the owner of an energy company like CPS Energy. I have one question, Rudy. A question was asked of me recently, and I want to ask you. Will this increase be used to fund any staff bonuses?
No, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear because sometimes that's one of the criticisms we hear. You know, I always carefully consider every proposed CPS Energy rate adjustment. And it's been significantly demonstrated to me that the current proposal for a four-and-a-quarter rate increase is immediately needed to ensure the continued adequate, efficient, and reliable energy delivery to every household and every business in the CPS Energy system. That is why I will support it. I think some... I think something worth noting is we're looking at an average $4.50 per month increase as stated by CPS Energy. And when you think about it, that is less than 15 cents a day to continue to receive reliable and efficient and yes, affordable energy. And for lower-income families supported by the CPS Affordability Program, it's half of that, maybe eight cents a day in additional cost. Plus, so many people are eligible for ADP program and REAP program funding. But CPS, their need for critical technology upgrades to ensure the entire system operates effectively, the addition of new energy production sources to replace the aging, less efficient power sources, the manpower needs with retirements and having to continue to attract top-quality engineers and operators in our continually growing population, not to mention nearly every household's growing energy demands, it mandates this current rate hike. This, however, does not guarantee any future rate adjustments. We will need to monitor how effectively CPS Energy applies this rate hike along with the one that it received two years ago, and how those rate hikes combine to address the needs CPS has. As we go forward, any future rate request will have to justify itself and stand on its own before I, for one, am likely to continue to vote for raising residents' energy bills. As to alternatives to this rate adjustment, it is overly simplistic to portray cuts to CPS budgets or COSA budgets as a substitute for the growing energy needs for a growing community for the next two years and for the next 20 years. And again, that's why I will support this rate increase. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Courage, Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, CPS, for the presentation, Ben, you as well. Look, every week, we all sit up here and 90% of what we do is basically administrative. The consent agenda dominates the day. We check the box, do the nuts and bolts, and move on. 10% of the time, or just under 10% of the time, we actually have a real, you know, substantive yes or no vote, and we have to choose. It's either yes or it's no. But every so often, and my guess from watching city council over the past few years, every so often, it might happen two or three times during the course of a council member's time here, there's a vote that yes or no isn't, aren't the only choices. And you have an opportunity to do something so impactful where you can directly affect our citizens' lives for the better while also changing the course of how we do business here at City Hall for the better. And today, this vote is one of those moments. Doing things differently is hard. It makes people uncomfortable. It makes people nervous. But to get through it, I think we all need to remember who put us here and what our job is. And that's to fight for the people of San Antonio, and it's to find solutions to the tough problems. Raising rates 4.25% on the people of San Antonio right now is simply not the right thing to do. Of all the big cities in the United States, we have the third highest poverty level here. Wages in San Antonio are stagnant. Over the last year, Mayor, wages here are only up 2.4%, which is less than the proposed rate hike. Statewide, wages are actually up 6.1% and nationally 4.2. We're lagging behind. The hourly wage rate in San Antonio is below the national average by 13%. Inflation's up, meaning people are paying more for gas and groceries. Interest rates are up, which means people are paying more for housing. The cost of living over the past few years has gone up 16%, while household income has gone down 2.3%. At the midpoint of 2023, we had more than 1,700 layoffs in the city of San Antonio, already more than the entire length of our previous year. And from the pandemic, we had 40% of our businesses close, which is 6% higher than the national average. CPS rates, while we always brag about the affordability, when you look at the average wage being earned by a San Antonio resident and you compare that to how much they're paying for energy, the average person, here in San Antonio, we pay the third highest. In other words, San Antonio residents are paying more out of their income for energy than every other city in the state other than two. Yesterday, a lot of us did Blue Santa, right, where we got to visit homes in our districts and pass out gifts. And I went to the Cardenas home in District 10. Mom and two kids were there, and it's an amazing event if you haven't seen it. And we went in and, you know, gave the presents and the children were opening up all these five or six dollar gifts, and you saw the joy in their eyes. And we brought diapers and other necessities to the mom, and she was tearing up, and I was frankly tearing up. And I said this before, but over at City Hall too often, we forget about those people. It actually offends me when people say this is a small rate increase, right? Let's not forget, this is part of a package. Two years ago, you voted on a rate increase, it raised everybody's yearly bill by about $40. This one's going to do $50, and we're going to keep on going. CPS has been honest, they're coming back two more times. By the time we get done with four rate increases, we've raised everybody's utility bill by That's real money to people. But I recognize that CPS, as I've mentioned to Rudy, needs money. And everybody up here on the dais has said that CPS and their long-term health and sustainability is a top priority for this council. We all agree on that. And so, you know, Mayor, this, this, let's, we got to keep the lights on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Respectfully, that's not the point. The only issue that's before this council today is how are we going to pay for this money that CPS needs? That's the issue. And so it's not a yes or no question. It's about how do we do it? And I've spoken with some of my colleagues, and, you know, I've had people tell me, Mark, you just get up there, vote, vote no, and leave it at that. But as, but as we've discussed, just coming up here and voting no doesn't, it's not providing a solution to our problem. And again, I think what we're all charged with doing is coming up with solutions to the problem. So I don't just want to vote no without first trying to present a solution to how we can get CPS this money, but not put the entire burden on the backs of our citizens. Commissioner Moody has distributed a letter to all of us, and I won't read it verbatim. But he talks about how he is also in opposition to this rate increase. And of course, the rate increase will affect non-San Antonio residents as well, right? It's going to affect people all around Bear County. And Commissioner Moody's solution is that we find all $85 million necessary to fund CPS through our own budget. Frankly, I love that idea, but I know from talking with all of you that that is not going to be popular here. And so I'm left with trying to figure out, well, how can we do something? How can we show San Antonio and Texas and really the world what good government looks like? How can we stand up and fight for the people while also finding a solution for CPS? It's so easy just to sit up here and say how hard this is, and we don't want, we don't like rate increases, and then we all just click the little, you know, yes button on our screens and go about our day, and that's it. But doing something hard is often the right way to do it, and this is going to be hard and it is going to be a little bit difficult. But that's why I'm proposing to lessen the burden on our San Antonio citizens, come up with a compromise proposal where we cut this proposed rate increase in half, and then fund the rest of what CPS needs through our budget process next year. And I've talked with city staff, and the 2025 general fund budget looks like it's going to be 90 or 100 million dollars more than this past year. We just need to not grow government as much next year, take some of that 90 or 100 million, and invest with CPS to get them the remainder of the money that they need. And yes, I do also believe that every big organization can look within themselves and find a way to get leaner and more efficient, and I would certainly ask that CPS does that as well to help out. Rudy said, we can do this together. We can do this together. And that's why, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion at this time to cut the proposed rate hike in half. So I move to amend the motion on the floor to reduce the approved increase to the CPS Energy electric and gas-based rates, the system average, from 4.25% to 2.125% effective February 1, 2024, contingent on the CPS Board approving a 2.125 rate increase by February 1.
There was a motion and a second. Andy, is that possible?
Yes, Mayor, but what I will suggest, I mean, the rule is always that if there's a motion, we discuss the motion first. But here, since the motion, the factors that the council would consider in terms of the rate increase are so intertwined, I think we can carry on with the council discussion, but first consider the the motion when there's actual votes, if that makes sense.
So hold the amendment action item to the end and just continue with.
What I'm saying, Mayor, is you can discuss them as a whole.
Just continue the discussion.
Correct, right.
Keep both actions at the end.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So we'll continue on with the main discussion to include the amended language that has a motion and a second. And just to clarify, we will take the action, we'll have a vote on the amended language first, and then move on to the main, main motion. So Councilmember Rocha Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll start off by acknowledging and appreciating Debbie Ponse from District 4 here, as well as Peter O'Nofre, and they've always been, I feel, at the forefront of this. So I appreciate all of the time that you all have taken. You all have had multiple meetings with CPS staff as well as with our community residents. So I really appreciate the time that you've taken to participate. And Mr. O'Nofre earlier talked about the rate advisory committee, and I was sad to see that removed from the factor, but I completely appreciate Rudy, the different team that you put together, and you allowed Mr. O'Nofre to continue being a part of it. I'm going to focus today on the fact that Debbie and Mr. O'Nofre have focused a lot on one particular area in District 4, and that's the Quintana neighborhood, and these are some of our most vulnerable residents. And the Strategic Resiliency Plan that Mr. O'Nofre referenced today, and so he's kept me updated with it, I think that this is an opportunity to help some additional folks that I do think are in need of help, not just in District 4, but across the city. And so I just wanted to put a plug for, I'd love to see how much more we can discuss that because I really do think that that's going to help a lot of our residents. One of the things that I also heard today from the Sierra Club, and I appreciate your advocacy always, thank you for being here, was some additional research on rates. And that's what I want to focus my comments on specifically today. I mentioned this last week. I mentioned that there is, in the city charter, there is a clear indication that our supervisor, which is Ben Gorsell, needs to assemble facts for proper determination of cost services and fixing some of those variable rates. For your reference, since you all don't all have the charter in front of you, I'm going to read specifically what the supervisor of public utilities duties include, but I'm going to highlight some of the key ones that I think address what Debbie, what Mr. O'Nofre, and what the Sierra Club have been talking about, and I think that would make us feel more comfortable in the future. The supervisor shall assemble facts that are essential to proper determination of cost service and fixing of reasonable rates, keyword there being reasonable. Unfortunately, the charter says he, but this position shall keep up to date an inventory of the property used in public service, the cost of such properties as actually and reasonably incurred or as fixed by appraisal additions and retirements made each year, the depreciation of all matters, and interim to periodical readjustment of the rate base. I have heard earlier today some comments as well about technology and outdated technology, et cetera. Under his assistance, under his direction, he shall have the power to make and shall conduct all inspections and examinations of public utility properties, accounts, and records. I mentioned this last week, but I've never seen a report just yet with all of this. At the close of each calendar or fiscal year, he shall make a comprehensive report and recommendations to the council, which after receiving them, may proceed with informal negotiations or with formal proceedings. Again, I'm reading this directly from the city charter, and I feel that we're in violation of the city charter if we don't do this annually. Every public utility operating within the city shall furnish the supervisor regular reports as to capital outlay, property retirements, operating revenues, operating expenses, taxes, and other accounting matters according to the standard accounting classifications for each utility. We've been told a few times that an independent auditor or consumer advocate might not be the way to go because CPS is its own entity. However, again, I wanted to point this this out, that I think that this might solve some of the the issues that we've had. In addition, the city may require reports regarding salaries, wages, employees, contracts, service performance, and all other records of operation that pertain to proper rate adjustments on the basis of facts and regular administration. And again, I just wanted to bring that up because I feel that we have been missing an opportunity, an annual opportunity, to review this type of information before we cast our votes. And so I just want to make sure that we don't miss another report. And so next time that CPS comes to us with a proposal for a rate increase, I'm going to expect to see all of these reports. I'm going to expect an annual report before I feel comfortable taking my vote. Additionally, on the CPS webpage, I go to the webpage, and I don't see if I need help where to go. And so I'd like to ask if CPS Energy know that there's a lot invested in REAP and in programs, but I don't think that a lot of the residents would know where to go, right, to get some additional help. So if this rate increase were to pass today, I want something big and flashy that says, if you need help paying your bill, please click here, right, and make it easy. I do want to recognize that the crew team, Oscar, does an incredible job with this. I do want to recognize that the crew team, Oscar, does an incredible job with District Four and specifically working with Yohani Hernandez over in our constituent services department, has helped approve about fourteen hundred households in District Four this year alone. And so, on average, the family size is about five. Of those a hundred and twenty residents, most of them are gra, or of all of those fourteen hundred residents, a hundred and twenty are grandparents that are raising their grandchildren and I feel like they need a little bit of extra support. And so, to Councilwoman Marina Derrita-Gavito's point earlier, anything that we can do to help our most vulnerable and especially our senior citizen population, I think we should be doing. There is also a program that helps folks with disability. I don't think that people know a lot about it. There's, there's, there's several programs that I still feel need to be out there and more information needs to be given to the residents who just don't know where to go and access this. So I do want to ask specifically if you all can commit to just, even on your website, right, just giving some, some additional links and some, some additional information or Rudy, can you maybe help me, help me feel a little bit better about that part?
Yeah, so, you know, again, antiquated systems, right? There's only so much you could put on that, on that, on that first page. And we just had a conversation at our last board meeting about, you know, how many clicks it takes to get to key information. It, you know, I'm on a manage my, you know, I, I view my bill online. So when I, and I just was in there this week looking to, you know, to, because I thought a question might come up of this nature. You know, if you go into your bill site, to your, you know, manage my account site, the assistance button is right there, you know, but it may be harder just if you're just going to the regular site to find it. So, point well taken. I think we, we, you know, part of the technology investment that we're making is to upgrade all that infrastructure, but we will, we will take a look to see if we can get that in a, in a, in a place where it's easy to get to. We, I will, you know, the commitment that, that we've had, that we will continue to support, is to find creative ways to outreach to any segment or subsegment of our community that, that needs the help. I think we do more than most utilities in terms of the outreach that we try to do and, you know, I would ask for y'all's help in getting in front of particular, you know, the Quintana, you know, Quintana, you know, Road, we, one of our biggest facilities is right there off of Quintana Road by the port, are, that manages our underground infrastructure. So we're neighbors of that particular, you know, neighborhood, but whether it's seniors or folks on disability that, that have disabilities, people who are on life sustaining equipment that we need to get into our critical care customer, you know, program, we always have an opportunity to do more. And we engage customers wherever they will engage us, you know, proactively. So, yes, Councilwoman, you've got my commitment to be as creative as we can, you know, figure out together to get to those who need the help the most.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Rudy. And then, back to the, the point that I was making earlier and this doesn't necessarily, it, it's not a CPS, it's literally in the, in the charter. So Eric, can we, can we get a commitment, like for these annual reports to be presented to us instead of just when we have adjustments coming?
Can I address that first, Councilwoman? Obviously, when you, when any council member makes a comment that we're either violating the law or violating the charter, I have to address that. And we can talk at executive session and I will, I will be very firm in saying though, publicly, we are not violating the charter. We can talk about reports that you or the council would like in terms of what information you would like from CPS, but as you will hear from our exec discussion, we are not violating the charter.
Yes, Councilwoman, and I was just gonna, I'm glad Andy jumped in. We, we are not violating, violating the charter and as you, as you know, three or four times a year, both utilities come before council with, with periodic reports and we'll continue to do that and, and provide any information that we have available to us and making sure that the council is aware of operational and financial statuses of both utilities throughout the year and challenges and opportunities that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roche Garcia, Councilmember Cabeo Haverda.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. You know, CPS has made a convincing case. I don't think this is a matter of if, it's a matter of how. The question is how we're paying for the upgrades and, and different things that are needed. They're not going to stop winter storms, they're not going to hot, stop hot summers from happening, but they can offer us reliability through those events. Some of us who were on council during the, at least the winter storm, remember the frustration, the fear, the helplessness of our community, but how we felt in not being able to go out and, and help as much as we could. So my vote is based on this. My guiding principles through this discussion have been reliability and affordability. For me, the discussion comes down to three things. Again, reliability and affordability, that's the goal, how we're going to, how we're going to pay for the needed upgrades, and then bringing ideas to the table to accomplish those things. Because we can't say no to the idea of a rate change, a rate change, any change, without offering an alternative. Of course, I've offered a revenue transfer idea and I started that idea which sparked a conversation, an uncomfortable conversation, but we knew when we were elected that we were going to have difficult discussions and they can and should come with this job. This would make us stronger, more resilient. The idea evolved into a dedicated surplus proposal, which doesn't eliminate the need for a rate change, but does allocate specific funds for reliability upgrades. These last few years have driven home that need to be, the need to be prepared is a top priority and I know it's expensive to meet that need. And even right now, I'm still open to ideas, especially when it comes to helping families with the lowest incomes and highest challenges in our city. CPS has programs in place, we can always do better and reach more people. Councilman White's proposal intrigues me, however, I have to take issue with a couple of statements. It offends me to hear someone say that we do not consider our underserved communities. There is those of us on the dais that consider our underserved communities with every vote, not just the ten percent that get attention. There are those on this dais who have a majority people in need in their districts. Also, keeping the lights on is absolutely the point. We heard about affordability, which is obviously important, but said nothing about reliability. That's what this is about. Having said that, an idea was proposed and I have to consider it. We can't sit on this dais again and say no without offering an alternative. And this is an alternative today I have to consider. But we're at the end of the runway, at the end, and this decision, as I've said all along, will be, I'm sorry, I'm saying it way, way too much, but this is what I hear a lot from community, from CPS, is about reliability and affordability now and for the coming years. What we do today will help lay the foundation for the growth that we know is coming. All our plans, the airport expansion, the ART, workforce development, economic development, transportation, mobility, the growth of our higher learning institutions, UTSA, A&amp;M, Alamo Colleges, our, our school districts, all of it's predicated on reliable energy and water. Prior councils have kicked the can down the road. There were eight years at least without, without a rate increase and we had to go through this a couple of years ago. I can't be part of a council that will deny our community reliability in our city. I cannot continue to kick that can down the road for future councils. CPS and the city are one and the same. I've said it over and over, it's not us versus them, we're in this together. The proposal is planning, the proposal is a roadmap for CPS's future, which means our community's future. And with that, I will ask CPS to come up, I'm not sure if you had a chance to address the proposal, Councilman White's proposal, if you have any thoughts on it, how, how it would affect what we're looking at here?
Councilman, when we propose investment in our, you know, in our, in our organization, you know, these are fifty-year investments. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a short-term solution that's not going to solve a long-term problem. Ultimately, you know, it's council decide how to manage through, you know, the, the proposal, but, you know, we asked, as part of the process, we asked for, you know, not a penny more than we think we need to make long-term investments. Every year, we reconcile, you know, the money coming in and what our expenses are and how costs are, you know, are, are going up or going down, what assets are coming off the books and what's that, assets we're adding, you know, to the book. So, you know, I think there was a comment made earlier about a perpetual, you know, rate increase. Well, you reconcile every year because you're making new investments that, you know, that, that all these resources come into one bucket and go right back out to provide the service that we provide. So, so, you know, we've asked for four point two five percent, you know, consideration. You know, we've gone through the process per our governance to justify that, that, the investments that we're going to make, you know, with those dollars. So, our proposal is a long-term, long-view, you know, proposal, not a short-term proposal.
Thank you, Rudy. Ben, do you have, would you mind coming up? We talked many times about my original proposal, the two to three percent, and today I'm hearing, if I'm correct, it's at least one percent from the city. Is that correct? Would you have any, any comments on that?
Well, I guess as I understand the proposal, we're talking about amending the rate increase from four point two five down to two point one two five and then funding the difference between, I believe, from the city budget and the CPS Energy budget. Again, the staff recommendation that we made was based on the rate case that was submitted that we work with CPS Energy on and that rate case said, you know, justifies a need of four point two five percent, so that's our recommendation. You know, we've had some conversations over the past couple of work sessions about city payment and including a revised financial policy where we would give back additional dollars above if we, if we exceeded ten percent of our adopted budget. And, you know, where we left that conversation, as I recall, is we're coming back in the spring to have that conversation goal setting, so we didn't reach conclusion even on that point. So, you know, from our perspective, the recommendation is the four point two five percent.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabeo Haverda, Councilmember Palais.
Thanks, thanks, thanks to everybody who came and thanks to everybody who spoke. I, I don't think anybody up here listened to any voices that disagreed with each other and thinks, you know, one is coming, coming at it, you know, from a place of bad faith. I don't think everybody's coming at it from the right place. It's just that, you know, at the end of the day, when some people do the algebra, they come up with different, different numbers, right, and different conclusions. And that's because everybody comes to this conversation with different needs and wants and, you know, Andy and I have, have frequently talked about, you know, the, the public officials' duties as fiduciaries, right? And it's, you know, and I've been thinking a lot about that lately. And usually I talk about this when, when this issue of the rate increase comes up or when the issue of, you know, tax increases come up. But, you know, there's no doubt, I don't think anybody, you know, in America thinks that government officials don't owe a duty to the public that sent them up here. I mean, everybody agrees with that. I think everybody also agrees that public officials owe a duty to the very institution on which, you know, which they govern, and then they owe a duty to their office, right? And, you know, there's, and this is not, nothing new or novel or really smart that I'm saying, I mean, there's a lot of smart people out there who've looked at this, including a lot of courts, and they've all said, you know, that inherent in this job are these three duties to, you know, place the public's needs first, right? And then they also say, others say, "Oh yes, and you also have to place the institution's needs first," right? And then others say, "And you also have to place the, the office's needs first," right, which creates a riddle, right? Well, which one is more first than the other? And it's, it's situational in many, in many instances, right? And there's a, you know, I'd invite you all to read, there's, and none of you will, but I have to call them out because I love them, it's, Vinnie Johnson over at St. Mary's University wrote a great article in my last year of law school on this very topic and it's, you know, and even he was like, you know, you guys, I guess it depends on which, you know, which day the, you know, you wake up in and, you know, in which direction the wind is blowing and what the competing needs are, right? However, what's really interesting is that, you know, all of these, all this research conducted by people much smarter than I am, right, and people who've really looked at this issue of, of the competing duties, they all use the same two words, right, when talking about the duties, right? The, the duties as they apply to needs, right? And the duties as they apply to providing the services, right? And the one duty that is never mentioned in there is the duty to be faithful to the wants of the majority of the people, right? And that's, I think it's because there's a realization that, you know, we as government officials, we are up here to govern in a way that puts the needs of the public first, right? And then oftentimes, sometimes those needs conflict with what they want, right? And that bet, that if I ask anybody in this room, "Hey, would you really, you, would you like, would you want, do you wish for a rate increase?" Right? I don't think there's anybody in this room who wants a rate increase. I mean, unless I'm wrong, anybody in this room want a rate increase? Yeah. And I think if you asked, you know, the one point five million people that, you know, come here, you know, "Would you like to pay more?" Well, everybody's going to say no, right? I don't want to raise my mother's, you know, rates. Rudy, you don't want to raise my mother's rates, I know that, right? And so, how do you solve the problem, right? When those, those wishes are contrary to the needs? And I think, you know, the Italians have this, this phrase called mal governo, right? It's bad government. If the government just says, "Well, I'm only going to look at needs." You, you have to listen to what people want. We're hearing what people want, Rudy. People don't want this, right? And, you know, and so, how do you, how do we, hearing that, plug that into the algebra, you know? And I think the way you do it is, yeah, you build consensus, right? And you have a lot of community town halls like we did, right? We have a lot of meetings with you in public and behind closed doors, right? You, you've come to my office and we've had to hash through this. I know that you visited with every city council member up here. You know, we, we ask surveys, we ask everybody, Eric, we ask you and Ben Gorsell, a lot of tough questions. And, you know, the one thing the public, I don't think, understands is that we also ask each other tough questions of ourselves, right, up here. And so, you know, Roberto Trevino used to say, you know, we, before we cut, we measure once, twice, three times, four times, right? And I think that that's, that's what we do well up here. I think we measure a lot before we cut and, and I think we've done that, right? And still, somehow despite the fact that we've done that, you, you're seeing disagreement up here on the dais and that's okay. And all that means is, is that we, we come at this from different angles, right? And so, you know, Councilwoman Castillo and Councilman White, I'll tell you, probably disagree on almost everything except for one or two things, right? Councilman McGee Rodriguez and I disagree on almost everything except for one, two things, right? And those one or two things are, you know, we approach this job loving everybody in this town. We love everybody in this town. We, and we want everybody to live, work, play, and thrive and we want dignity and respect and compassion for everybody. We all want that, right? And so, you know, it's, we don't disagree up here because, you know, one of us cares more than the other. That's not true. I certainly don't think that. I don't think there's, you know, any daylight between us as it relates to, you know, being smart, right? We're all, we're all moderately smart up here. Maria Gomez is, Fabia Gomez is the only truly brilliant person in this, in this city, but the rest of us, we try really hard and there's, there's no daylight between us when it comes to the amount of work we pour into this job. And so, and yet, we disagree, right? And that's, that's the nature of deliberative government because this is what happens when you have to make tough decisions. And so, I've got priorities. My priorities, you know, and each one of us has different priorities and they rank differently. I'll tell you what one of mine is, Rudy, and you and I have talked about it. I am, I lose sleep at night, and I know you do too, about the number of cyber attacks CPS gets on a daily basis. You know, I visited with John Dixon and, you know, who you guys brought on board to, you know, conduct sort of a health check on your, your cyber systems and, and the level of protection you have. And I, I know he told you loud and clear and there's, and you've told us, right? Like, if we don't invest in these systems and continue to be cutting edge, all we're doing is gifting North Korea and Russia and China a Christmas gift, right? Which is, "Here's the key to CPS, please hurt us," right? That's, I have a fiduciary duty to the public to make sure that our utility has what it needs in order to withstand, you know, a catastrophic hostile attack like that. And what you've told me is if we don't do this, right, we don't have the resources to take care of that. How do I ignore that, right? And how do I risk a possible shutdown at the hands of, you know, these bad actors to the ability for my hospitals and the medical center to not get energy? How do I, how do I in good faith, right, administer my, you know, my, my work here in accordance with my fiduciary duty if I don't keep in mind that Methodist Hospital needs electricity to keep dialysis machines on, right, and to keep kids on, you know, on ventilators during important surgeries? I need that to be a guarantee and the public needs that, right? I also need the military, JBSA here, to be on all the time, right? Because, you know, San Antonio is, in my opinion, the most important asset the United States has as it relates to cybersecurity and the Air Force and the Army. And so, we need that, right? And so, we need that, right? And yet, my saying that to some people sounds like, oh, well, then you don't care about how much it costs for me to live, right? Or you don't care about my rent, you don't care about, you know, the fact that the milk costs more at HEB this year than it did before. And that's a, that's a false choice. That's a false binary choice. And I don't think people who say that are coming at it in bad faith, saying something that, you know, they know to be false, but it sounds that way to them. And we're sensitive, which is why, you know, I'm intrigued by Councilman White's proposal, right, of cutting this, and then cutting our spending, and asking you to cut yours. And this is, this is an idea, right? That may or may not get all the votes, but at the end of the day, we have to do something. Because doing nothing is not going to keep my city running on all six cylinders like it needs to. And it's a tough city to run, right, with a lot of challenges and a lot of problems. And, you know, at the risk of being accused by Councilwoman Castillo of doing too much manysplaining, you know, I'm going to stop there because I, you know, I think you're picking up on what I'm laying down here. And I hope the public understands, at the end of the day, that our job is tough, and that we promised them when we ran for office that we were going to come up here and make the tough decisions. And I think that, you know, all of us who are parents make tough decisions, those of us who are employers make tough decisions. And this is the day where we are called upon to make the tough ones. And so, I don't envy any of my colleagues and the conversations they're going to have to have with the public when they go back to their districts. And, because I know I'm going to get heat, but this is, you know, getting the heat and absorbing that heat, that's the job. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Palais. Get back to my queue here. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, CPS, for all the work that you've done, putting all those presentations together and answering all of our questions. And thank you, city staff, for the work that you have done in helping us understand this big decision that we're about to make today. Having seen what it could be, I'm super grateful that we have a public utility that is always looking out for our residents and trying to make sure that we have a reliable energy source that we can count on. And so, I'm always thankful for that. I think there's two main questions here that we are all talking about. The first is, do we want a reliable energy utility or a frugal, scrappy one? And the second, as some of my council colleagues have mentioned, is how do we make the most responsible decision that keeps into mind affordability and reliability at the same time? So, for the first question, having looked at your financial history in the past and how the last time you had a rate increase before the last one, it's amazing to me what you all have done. You all have done a lot while keeping a pretty low budget. But if you look at industry norms, you don't see a lot of companies that are able to continue to support the increased demand of communities without actually increasing rates. So, I think you all have done a lot, and there is a lot more work to be done from an infrastructure perspective, both from technology, right? Councilmember Adriana Rocha Garcia actually mentioned the technology purpose of the website. The website could use some little love, and I think making sure that residents can actually know how to get to where they need to get to, making the process a little bit more streamlined. But also outdoors, we see structural needs from infrastructure perspective that need to be addressed, maintenance, that hasn't been focused on because it's, there's not enough extra resources for that. So, I think there is work to be done in terms of making our energy utility stronger. But then tackling the second question about affordability and reliability at the same time, and those don't, to me, have to be mutually exclusive. So, Councilmember Adriana, or Councilmember Marina Alde de Gavito, I have to get all these names right, sorry. Councilwoman Alde de Gavito started the conversation with how do we increase our ADP program? And quite frankly, over the last couple of weeks, I've been really trying to focus and understand that piece specifically. I was so pleasantly surprised to see how many households were already getting access to that program, but also disappointed to see the gap of how many families weren't. So, I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done on access. I do have a couple of specific questions, Corey, on one slide that you presented, if you wouldn't mind coming up on Slide 3. So, can you just talk to me really briefly about how we got the average residential bill impacts for the 4.45 and the 2.42? Is the average bill for a resident of San Antonio $100? And then on the ADP program, is their average bill $50 a month? Is that how we got to those numbers?
So, the average bill is calculated just by taking the average usage of our broader community, which is around 1,100 kilowatt-hours. So, as a blended, kind of mathematical number of 4.45, the average bill is about $164, $165, kind of as it is today, based on that usage. And so, from the affordability discount program, it's approximately half of that add instead.
Got it. So, you're not saying that the average bill for someone on the ADP program is $50?
No, no, we're not saying that. And I think, I don't know where it is, but I think in one of the supplements, we have it called out, where I could point that to you later.
Yeah, so I would love to see what the average bill is for folks on the ADP program, because I've learned that we're potentially increasing that program to $18 a month of a discount for anyone that's applicable. Is that correct?
Correct.
And if you're, a part of that is electric and gas. So, if you don't have gas, do you get the entire discount for electric, or is it only the electric portion?
You get the electric, there's a slide on there that showed it. You would get a little bit less, I'll go to that one there. So, if you were electric only, you would just get the 1,167 currently, and then you'd go down to the bottom left there, 1,348 if you were electric only.
Got it. So, you still only do get that electric portion?
Correct, yes.
So, what I would push us, as my colleagues have already mentioned, to do is, how do we increase this ADP program? One of the biggest things that's always plagued our city is our economic divide, those that have and those that don't. And those that are severely highly burdened, energy burdened, or high energy burdened, are the ones that are going to be most affected by this, right? That even though it's a lower amount of an increase for them, they're the ones that are most significantly impacted. And so, if their energy bill is $100 a month, that difference means a lot more than for someone that's not severely energy burdened. So, I would really like us to go back and think about, what is it that we can do with this ADP program to enhance it? Can we do a sliding scale? Because I do agree, we need to increase the eligibility to 150%. But what we don't want to happen is if we increase that, the people that are super high in need don't get access to the program, right? So, can we think about an innovative way to say, is there a sliding scale discount that we can implement? So, if you are 100% at the federal, above or below the federal poverty line, it's X% versus 125 versus 150. So, I'd like for us to think about more innovative ways to, one, not only increase the ADP program, but also, how can we make sure that the discount that we're providing is actually helping and impacting them? Because only then we'll actually be able to support the families in our communities that need it most, and those ones that are speaking here. And quite frankly, many of them probably haven't reached out to us because they're working to keep their lights on a daily basis. So, that, my support for this today really pushes that, if, before y'all come back, we want to see this program completely revamped and make it a lot more robust, so we can feel certain that our community is actually able to afford their energy bill while you guys work on the reliability. Because we have no doubt, I think none of us have any doubt, that you all will deliver to us a reliable energy utility. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, can I?
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Go ahead, Eric.
Just let me, let me kind of restate, I think that the issues that Councilwoman Cor were talking, was talking about, and refer back to Councilwoman Gavito's initial conversation. I, you know, I think it's, I think it's important, and I think we can do it within the first 90 days of 2024, hit the issues of increasing the ADP to 150%, come back to the council, work with CPS, come back to the council. I think, I think both of you hit upon the issue also, that even if we didn't increase the 150, based on the current plan, we still have collectively about 60,000 people who are eligible right now that aren't on ADP. So, how do we tackle that jointly with CPS? And so, what I envision is a B session back with the council in February or March to tackle that issue. Rudy and I have talked about this, Ben and his staff have keyed on it, keyed in on it. You know, the 60,000 people who are eligible right now, how many of them are we dealing with on childcare issues at Department of Human Services? How many of those 60,000 are the same ones that are applying for our under-one-roof program? So, where are those synergies, and how can we make more ground up in addition to the 150%? So, I would envision, based on this conversation, I think this was an issue that Councilman Courage raised last week, we'd schedule it and come back to the council with an actionable plan to be able to do that.
Thank you, Eric. We'll move on to Councilmember Miki Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I know this is a difficult, difficult day. I've said from day one that I'm not immovable. I consider myself to be a fairly reasonable person, and I've made decisions that are challenging and not necessarily popular politically, but being popular isn't what drives me. But I do hope you recognize that I take every decision very heavily and very personally, and do what I believe to be right at the end of the day. And sometimes people disagree with me. Many times, I've been on the minority side of a vote, and that is okay. I'm not immovable, but I'm not moving if it's against what I believe to be right. And for the duration of this request, I've indicated a few things were important to earn a yes vote from me. One is that we need rate reform, or a tiered rate structure that incentivizes lower energy usage. The more you use, the more you pay. And the issue is that CPS lacks the appropriate technology, and in that case, I would need to know a detailed and accurate timeline for the implementation of rate reform, and that has not happened. We need to have real and extended conversations with residents, not just a two-month blitz. People need to rebuild a lot of trust, and that is going to take time. I've quoted authors and organizers before who often say, "Change moves at the speed of trust." Three, we need to follow the best practice of hiring a consumer advocate that would primarily look out for the needs of residential and small business customers. The decisions and recommendations made by CPS or our city staff will always be painted by the need for revenue, and an independent voice will not have that same priority. When I make decisions, I make decisions for the least of us. It is so easy to say, oh, a bill is going up $4.50, $5, $6, or whatever amount, but I want to illustrate a point. There are people in my district who, from the second they receive their paycheck, must pay their rent, they pay for groceries, they pay for medications, they pay for diapers, clothes, and other necessities for their kids. And by the time they get to Day 2, the day after they receive their paycheck, they have nothing left of that check to spend. And if something unexpected happens, they go to one of the predatory lenders in our community that are in abundance, and they take out a horrible, horrible loan that is going to harm them more than it helps them in the long run. Every single dollar that they have matters. And we can say, we can say living paycheck to paycheck, but can you conceptualize what that means and what that feels like? We cannot be so far removed and out of touch as to scoff at $5 when residents will stand in line for five hours to receive a $20 turkey voucher, or a $15 box fan, or critters of joy receiving a $5 gift for their children. There's a large portion of my district whose reality is exactly that. And I won't put any of my constituents' business out there, but I will say this. I am in an incredibly privileged position as a councilman in the seventh-largest city in the country. I have a part-time job, and managing finances is one of my strengths. That's how I could comfortably run for office. And I have a husband with a decent job who's also in school, but there are weeks, more often than not, where I pay my bills, I buy groceries, I put gas in my car, pay my mortgage and car insurance, pay my student loans, and I live the rest of my life on a series of credit cards because I have nothing left and more bills to pay. So, I come here to this dais sometimes with $2 in my bank account, so I understand the reality of my constituents. And I'm in a fine position. I'm comfortable when compared to many in my district. I'm going to suck up whatever decision we make here today, and in the end, I am going to be all right. But so many others won't. I do want CPS to receive the funds needed to make the changes we need to build a more sustainable future, but I believe that there is another way. This is not a win-win scenario. There isn't really a win-win scenario right now, but if I have to choose, I've committed myself to my residents, and nothing weighs more heavily on my mind and heart than those who will be hurt by this decision. I'll add that, when Councilman White approached me with an idea to compromise with Everyn, you know, let's reduce the increase and find money somewhere else because CPS does need the money, I took it seriously for what its impacts could be. I don't necessarily consider it a major victory at face value. I'll still have residents who are hurting, but this rate increase is all but poised to pass, with or without my vote. And if there's an opportunity to cut it and mitigate its effects, I do feel an obligation and a need to do that. And that may be the victory here. So, I'm going to support the amendment to reduce the rate increase, and the results of that vote will determine my subsequent vote on the main motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Miki Rodriguez. Councilmember Viagra.
Thank you. Ben, talk to me about the proposal that, well, no, so, the amendment that we have before us, is it possible today that we could pass a 4.25% increase, but have CPS in February not, do half of that, and then after budget, do the other half? Would that be something we would do, or CPS could do?
No, I'm not sure I followed your...
So, if we, because the amendment before us is, let's cut it in half.
Right.
And let's, let's get to budget, which we start talking about in March, and then find the money there. But what I'm being told is, they need the 4.25% this year. Is it possible that they could get, you know, they could implement some of it this year, see what we can do, and then implement the rest after budget is passed in October? So that we can, we can see if we can bring the rate down from 4.25% if we have a surplus?
I think I can address that, Councilwoman. The council is considering a rate increase, and then the amendment to reduce it. What the council can do is put contingencies on it. What you can say is, you support the amendment with the expectation there'll be a discussion later on, but there can't be contingencies to the rates that the council either approves or doesn't approve.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Ben. So, this has been a struggle. We came back and we implemented a 3.85% rate increase in January of 2022. And I asked for certain things from CPS, and they delivered. And one that I'm going to highlight is the fact that they went after grants, and they got them, and were successful. And I want to be clear that the CPS sitting in front of us today is not the CPS of the winter storm, or the CPS that previous councils refused to give rate increases to. And we can go back into stories and about why you had people on this dais, one that sat in this chair that was a solid no every time. So, this is a different CPS with a different chair that has worked to build that relationship. But there are still specific asks in my community about affordability. And I hear a lot of conversation about those disadvantaged. And yes, but this is, this is about ratepayers across the board. While I'm not happy completely with the amendment to take from the budget, because either way then, the San Antonio residents pay. They're either paying through the rate increase, or they're paying because city services get reduced. So, I'm, I struggle with the amendment, but I struggle with not trying to do anything to make sure that we are taking into consideration that, yes, we need a rate increase, but how is this impacting the ratepayers, and specifically the residents of District 3, and the residents of San Antonio? But my job is to represent the residents of District 3. Because the residents of District 3 have real concerns and needs. And the advocacy that's happening, and why I like D10, is he's trying to advocate right now for his, for the residents of San Antonio and his residents. And that is what I have been trying to do this entire time. And I have been doing it with the help of CPS. But 4.25% on top of a 3.85%, on top of another ask, without clear, and if we could pull up Slide 4, without clear goals on when the technology and the security is going to be implemented, that's Slide 6, Slide 4, please, when the technology and security is going to be implemented, and when we are going to get this higher, is very concerning to me right now, and is why I don't want February or March. I want February for, before, as the rate increase comes in, I want February with an update and with a calendar in terms of when we are going to get these updates on how we meet these metrics. Rudy?
We have a implementation schedule on our technology that is crystal clear on when our technology will be upgraded. It's a five-year program. You know, we... You know, we're at the tail end of picking the technology and picking the implementation partner so we can get going. You know, that, that project is happening. It has to happen because our, we're at the end of life on our systems, and on the other side of that implementation are all the things that you all have said you want us, you know, to work on, you know, tiered rate structures, you know, more options on how customers get built. So, so just be clear, and I'll be glad to share our implementation, implementation schedule with you, but it is a, it is the most complex thing we will do for the next five years, is upgrade our technology, and there's a clear timeline. It's going to take us five years to get it done. Well, we're, we're about, you know, six, eight months, almost a year into that five-year program, but it's a five-year program beginning to end.
All right. And I think that, that's why, and there was no good timing for this to happen. I did want it to happen after the new year. And there was no good time for this to happen, but I think the outreach that we needed in terms of the public and understanding that either way this was going to impact them, I mean, they know everything's going up, HEB prices. They knew that this was coming, but communicating it to them in a way that understands this is their utility and how do we invest in it? And really not feeling like we had the time to go out there and to really share with them what, what was happening and why, in the end, the citizens of San Antonio are going to be impacted either through a rate increase or a reduction in budget, in terms of the conversation we've been having up here on the dais. And Andy, so we have to take the motion that Councilman White has made first before we make any amendments to that?
That's correct, Councilwoman.
All right. This is just, this is a hard situation, and I, and I'm interested to take that item up and see where we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viagra. Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ben and Rudy, for the presentations. I wanted to be sure, I thank all the folks who gave public comment, particularly the San Antonio Justice for Palestine, for drawing the parallels of the cutoff of electricity and water in Palestine, and how our struggles are interconnected, and cutting off the utilities for anyone, whether it's here in San Antonio or in Palestine, is unjust. I wanted to emphasize a point that Councilman White has hit on, which is wages in San Antonio are stagnant, and the cost of living in San Antonio has increased by 16% with stagnant wages. And a recent Harvard study found that over 750,000 Texas seniors struggle with housing costs, particularly in larger metropolitan areas like San Antonio. And some of our most vulnerable census tracts that experience energy burden of more than 25% are spending a good chunk of their incomes on their utilities. And I wanted to commend CPS Energy for increasing the amount of resource programs, but when I reviewed the Bradel study that you all commissioned, they find that despite the programs, folks still remain heavily energy-burdened. So just want to ensure that while we're exploring these programs, and I appreciate Eric talking about us needing to take a holistic approach on folks who are relying on different city services and how can we better support them, I would like to see that support come before a rate increase, right? And when we talk about solutions and additional proposals, when CPS Energy came for the last rate increase, one of my priorities was restructuring the current rate structure, right? And we've heard from folks in public comment, as well as from Councilman McKee Rodriguez, the need for a tiered rate structure to ensure that those who use less pay less and those who use more pay more. And we still haven't seen that materialize, right? What would give me confidence in supporting a rate increase would be having that rate, tiered rate structure materialize, right? Where I know that my constituents who are already not turning on the heat and air because they can't afford with the current structure, wouldn't be put in that situation to where they're feeling less inclined now to turn on the heat when it's cold. I want to commend my colleague, Councilman White, for his proposal. I've been here before, I've heard the platitudes about how difficult it is and how we, no one wants to vote yes, and no one is going to ask for a rate increase, and I've seen this play out before, right? And with that knowledge, I would be supportive of reducing the proposed rate increase because I believe that we have a responsibility to lessen that burden while CPS and the, and the committee that's created explores a potential tiered rate structure. I think we, we know as a city that we continue to be economically segregated. Yes, AMI has gone up, but that's because folks are moving here with higher education. It's not because we're doing a brilliant job at uplifting folks out of poverty, and it's my position that with this proposed rate increase, as originally proposed, only worsens that burden on San Antonio residents. So I will be supportive of the amendment to reduce the burden on San Antonio residents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Castillo. We'll go back now to Councilmember Courage.
Thank you, Mayor. In addressing our colleague's proposal, it appears to me to be a solution without a real solution. And what I mean by that is, the proposal is to cut in half the suggested rate hike and then delay the city providing the other half of that money in our next budget. And that means, you know, a year before it may get to CPS Energy. And in reducing that request by a half, that means we're reducing $42.5 million out of their request, and that's not just for next year, but that becomes not included in future budgets. So that's $42.5 million they don't get next year, or the year after, or every other year going forward. So the alternative presented is, well, the council will vote to give CPS Energy $42.5 million out of our next budget. I think we heard that the budget could be from 90 to 100 million, but I'm going to be conservative like our budget office usually is, and let's say it's 90 million increase next year. Okay, so we're going to take nearly half of that and give it to CPS. So what does that mean? We would not continue to do because we're only going to have half as much growth in our budget. I think we're planning on paying for additional police officers, 100 a year for the next couple of years. That's a significant amount of money to recruit, train, et cetera. There are all kinds of needs, and we have 10,000 people a year move into this city, which means there are growth in needs from thousands of more people every year, which is what our budget usually tries to accommodate. So will a council give up $42.5 million next year, and the year after, and the year after, and the year after to make up what they're asking for? I mean, that sounds kind of what the proposal is like. And then that money that's recommended, that we take out of future budgets, is still tax dollars. It's still the money from our citizens of San Antonio. So we would simply substitute all of CPS ratepayers paying that rate, and we'll simply have the citizens of San Antonio pay that difference. And to me, you're still using our residents' tax money to go ahead and pay for it, whether it comes out of CPS, or whether it comes out of our taxes every year. We're looking at $4.45 on average, and I'll just remind you again, that is 15 cents a day to try and guarantee we're going to have efficient energy, continue to grow, and be produced. I said before, I'm not saying I'm going to vote for any future rate hike. Anything needs to be justified. I think this one is justified. And if they come in two years or three years, and they can justify that, that's going to be the decision by the next council, whoever's on that. But I'm looking at today's council and today's decision, and I'm looking at the fact that I don't want to have a $42.5 million cut go into this request because I believe the request has been justified. And if CPS is going to continue to grow and provide the resources that we need, and it's going to replace aging, becoming more inefficient power sources, then we need to do it now and not wait a year to start it and not rely on the city to decide every year to vote to make up the difference. So I will not be supportive of the amendment that's been proposed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Courage. Councilmember Alderete Gavito.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Councilman White's amendment, first off, I do want to echo my colleague, Councilwoman Gavita's comment regarding the notion that we're not considering our most vulnerable residents. I agree, it was offensive. What I put, what I put forth earlier was a plan to benefit and protect our most vulnerable residents, to assist the working class of San Antonians and our elderly population with their CPS bills. By potentially adding 70,000-plus people to ADP or REAP, that opens them up to literally save hundreds of dollars a year on their CPS bill. So that, to me, is a direct action on helping them and considering them while also making the difficult but responsible decision to protect our infrastructure now. And CPS would not be able to do this, to push the ADP or REAP program that Councilwoman Dr. Rocha Garcia and Councilwoman Dr. Silkor were also suggesting that we do. I agree with Councilman Courage, we simply can't afford to cut city services to our residents. That's, that is talking about cutting the budget on our first responders, and we cannot afford to scale back on public safety, and that's exactly what's being proposed right now. In District 7, we have some of the highest amounts of F-rated streets and the second-most highest in sidewalk gaps. We cannot afford to decrease animal care services with people getting attacked literally daily by loose dogs. We've all worked tirelessly to approve the budget, and that will expand the level of service that we provide to our residents, and right now is not the time to walk that back. So I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Alderete Gavito. Councilmember Palais.
Thanks. CPS, you know, my job here today was to talk about, you know, how we come to these decisions and, or how at least I come to these decisions, but number two, I do want to use this three minutes to just ask you guys some questions. You know, we, we keep hearing over and over and over again, right, that if we continue to invest in renewables, we put ourselves at greater risk of, you know, more of those winter blackouts. Can you, Rudy, can you, you know, mindful of the fact that I only got three minutes here, so don't, don't play out the clock on me, but can you, can you just help, help us, give us some facts? You know, during that storm, was it the renewables that shut us down?
All forms of generation had trouble during the winter storm year, primarily because our, you know, our process for prepping for winter, the winter season was different. You know, there were a lot of plants down in that moment, you know, we made a change. Now you do plant maintenance in October, November, December, so that plants are ready, you know, January, February, March. So, so thermal generation, the, you know, coal and the gas, even nuclear, you know, our nuclear units had, had, had an issue. All sources had an issue, but in the wintertime, you're not expecting, especially when it's hazy and cold, you're not expecting solar to be there. Wind may or may not be there, but, you know, the value of having a diversified portfolio like, like we have, which goes all the way back to Mayor Cockrell, you know, who thought we were over-leveraged on natural gas in the, in the 1980s, it benefits us to be fully diversified. And this summer, it played out that our solar is the reason why we had excess generation to sell onto the market. You know, it was hot, and, and we were able to, you know, to bring some wholesale dollars in, you know, for, for our customers. So, you know, I am, I am bullish on the diversified portfolio being the right, you know, portfolio for CPS Energy. Renewables weren't to blame for winter storm year.
Okay. Is that, are you just saying that because you're in the pocket of big wind or big solar?
Been in this business a long time, sir. You know, we're pointed to the future, and the future is, you gotta, you gotta use it all.
Okay. Second is, you know, I continue to beat the drum on, and Cory, maybe you're the guy to ask, I continue to beat the drum on the cybersecurity issue. And, because I think, I think it's something we don't talk about enough in Cybersecurity USA, right? But Cory, Rudy, if we vote for this amendment, right, and this, this question's really important, guys, if we vote for this amendment, can you still upgrade the computer, cybersecurity systems to help us fight off, you know, these hacks that, you know, are happening like right now as we speak, right? Can you do that without going out to the market to borrow money and having a conversation with your rating agencies?
No, you know, the way we fund all of our programs is a mix of, you know, ratepayer dollars, which funds our equity accounts, and, you know, and leverage with our, with our bondholders. So it takes both for a multi-billion-dollar enterprise like CPS Energy to balance leverage with, with equity. And, and a big part of that is not just cybersecurity, it's also physical security. You know, we have to get eyes on substations and, you know, do all the things it takes to protect our infrastructure, Councilmen. So, and we've got a good plan, and we've got good people to protect ourselves, but it's going to take investment in systems to ensure we stay ahead of it.
Cory, I know that at night, most of us sleep on a pillow. You sleep on, you know, on the balance sheet and the, and the financial statements. Can you pay for the cybersecurity upgrades that you're asking for today if we approve the amendment?
We can't do that without risk, and as you mentioned, the only option is to borrow for it, and that presents significant risk and conversations with our rating agencies, so we'd have to take up...
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palais. Councilmember White.
So I just want to start by saying, it's been a pleasure working with CPS on this. I've enjoyed all the conversations, and I, and I, I respect what you guys do and think you're doing a great job. That question that the councilman just asked, I asked an extremely similar question at the B session. You know, what happens if you weren't to get any, any rate increase at all? You know, what would you do? And you said, "We would still go ahead and we would do what we have to do to, to upgrade the IT and software," and I'm assuming everything that it would take to, to make sure that CPS infrastructure was secure. But that's not what's on the table today. What's on the table today is one of two options, right? It's, it's either we do 4.25% or we do 2.125%. And I've had conversations with all my colleagues about, you know, well, should CPS tighten its budget a little bit more, or should the city, you know, give a little bit more? That's the conversation that we have to get to in the spring, but that we won't get to unless we make the tough decision and do this today. And, you know, I, I want to go back to that word, "together," and, and we've all said that we're here to do this together. It's not doing it together to ask the citizens to pay for the entire damn thing. That's not "together." "Together" is the city doing its part and CPS doing its part while we also ask the citizens to do something. And, you know, it's, it's a choice today between pushing everything onto the citizens of San Antonio and to the citizens that aren't in San Antonio, right, that are in Barre County, but you got to remember, the city's taking their money too.
But they get the service.
Right? They get the service, and we take their money as well. And so today, it's really a choice about whether we're going to stand up and fight for our citizens and take a look at that budget next year and figure out if that 90 to 100 million dollars more that we're going to get in the general fund, we can use to invest into CPS. And so, again, and I appreciate Manny's comments on the, on the cybersecurity and all of that, but nobody is saying that we do not want CPS... of that, but nobody is saying that we do not want CPS to get the full hundred and seventy million dollars over the next two years that they're asking for. Nobody's saying that. It, it's just doing it in a different manner, a manner that is less burdensome on the citizens of San Antonio, who should be top of mind for all of us. And I truly believe that everybody up here has the best interest in mind for our citizens. And if I've said anything otherwise, I, I certainly apologize because that was not the intent. But this is the time to be bold, today, right now. And we can do it. I believe that this group can do it. We can directly save our citizens' money while also charting a new course of investment into CPS, which we all say is so important. And if it's so important, we should be willing to put some general fund dollars into CPS. And I'm hopeful that my council colleagues today will join me in this and, and do, and do what the people of San Antonio, I think overwhelmingly, want us to do. It, it really, you know, having Councilwoman McKee Rodriguez and, and Councilwoman Castillo and others who, who were just a flat-out no in the beginning, working together to find a solution to a problem, rather than doing what we always do and go to our own political corners, and it's just a yes or a no, that's impressive, that's good work, that's what this city council should be doing, that's what leadership looks like. Let's get this done today. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember White, Councilmember, where are we? Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. Rudy, I have a couple of questions, and if you could please answer any yes or no, that'd be helpful, just given the time constraints.
I'm sorry. Eric, I forgot to call on Eric, he had to make a point. You'll get your time back, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to provide some additional context. Councilman White has used the number ninety million dollars and, twice. And frankly, I have an obligation to share with you what he's referring to. As you recall, we do a two-year balanced budget, and we have projected an additional revenue of eighty-nine million dollars in fiscal year twenty-five, over and above the adopted twenty-four budget. Because we do a balanced budget, that eighty-nine million dollars is projected to be spent on many of the things that were added in this year's budget and are planned to be added in fiscal year twenty-five. Things like the full-year funding of fire station, I'm sorry, of EMS unit forty that is being added at the end of this year, the second tranche of, of police officers that the council talked about. So I, I don't want the council to think, nor the public, to think that there is an available balance of ninety million dollars unallocated. Now, granted, we have to go through the fiscal year twenty-five budget, and you guys, as a council, may determine different things at the April work session, but the, the reason why we have a plan is so that you can look at it and make adjustments in enough time for us to, to prepare for the fiscal year twenty-five budget. I, I just, I, I wanted to make sure that the council knew what the ninety, the ninety million dollars was that was being referred to by, by Councilman White. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember.
Mayor, Mayor, I should get to get back in on that, okay? Because doing this after I say no, and he forgot, he didn't come in while I was talking, and now I don't get to say something in response to that, just isn't right.
I, I don't interrupt your time, Councilman.
The, the staff can explain the, the questions and the statements on the dais, the staff will respond to anything that needs to be clarified for the council. If anybody has a question on that, they can ask the question with their time. Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. Rudy, a couple of questions, yes or no, and then I have one, if you could go into a bit more detail, it's within the proposed twenty-twenty-four budget.
Well, the last time you asked me that yes-or-no question, it was more complicated than just my no, but I will do my best, Councilwoman.
Yes. So is CPS energy currently unprotected from cyber attacks?
No, we've got, no.
Okay, thank you. And is CPS energy currently unreliable?
No, we're highly reliable.
I was looking at, again, I know I asked the question the last time, if this proposed rate increase is going to take care of the Texas grid to ensure that there are no rolling, black or brownouts. Can you answer that?
Well, I'm going to have to expand on that a bit, because while we can't build the generation that the entire state needs to maintain a more reliable system, the more reliable we are, the more reliable our kind is.
And then within the proposed, or the twenty-twenty-four CPS energy budget, there's a bucket for customer strategy total for the energy delivery services, and for customer growth, there's eighty-eight point nine million. Can you help me understand that component of the budget for some clarification?
Yeah, I'll get my CFO.
Customer growth is in fact, you know, dealing with what it says, customer growth. So it's the installation, it's the installation of the infrastructure that you put in for new buildings, schools, homes, et cetera, the meters, the transformers, all the stuff that you expect for a community that's grown like ours, and civil work as well, yes.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, and, and I ask, right, because many of us, we have received those postcards, but that was my last question, thank you, Cory. We've received a, a lot of questions, right, and I get asked, are we currently subsidizing growth with our utility bill, right? And I, I wanted to be sure that I, I asked that question on the budget because I know with the proposed increase, there's additional funding that's being requested for, for growth. And I, I just want to emphasize that our residents, every month, invest in CPS energy, right? I don't want to minimize that their current bill is an investment in all of these pillars that you are asking for additional support in. But I also wanted to be sure that I thank you and your team for the work that you all have done. I, I, I again want to commend y'all for increasing the amount of support for energy burden residents, but I also understand it's not going to provide support to everyone. And emphasize the fact that, again, right, that this is an impact that all San Antonians are going to feel, whether you're a dual-income household, have multiple degrees, it was cited how many layoffs we've seen, and then these are in very competitive industries, right? So it's not just the, the folks on the lower end of the economic ladder, it's folks all over that are going to have to continue to make those cuts. And I heard a comment about fifteen cents. Our field office is, is housed in a library, the Collins Gorman Library, and we always have folks asking us for a quarter. They're asking us for a quarter to, to take the bus to get to their hospitality, hospitality job downtown on the Riverwalk, right? So I, I don't want us to, to minimize how much fifteen cents is for San Antonio residents who are trying to get to work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Castillo, Councilmember McKee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a point real quick, and it's that sometimes we think, we think that voting for one thing inherently means another will happen. I, I want to be clear, we will still need to discuss how we get the money, that's where the will of the council will guide direction on the issue of how. I know Councilman White, every single budget will say, let's cut spending, and I've gone head-to-head with him a number of times in defense of social programs that support our most vulnerable residents. We are allies today, but we will not be allies on that issue and the way he went to get his money, and that is okay. I would not support an amendment if I believed that we, that this body would then direct the cutting of our budget for the programs that we ask for every year. I can guarantee you, no matter what happens today, our budget is growing. Every year, we inch closer and closer to the next billion dollars added to our budget. We're going to be at two billion in no time, and that includes the revenue that we receive from CPS. We have room here to do right by our citizens. We've seen that CPS can apply for and win grants. We've looked over our own budget in great detail to find cuts. But when was the last time everyone here looked with as much vigor at CPS's budget? When was the last time you've checked for cuts to be made there? Do you know where cuts could be made? When was the last time we really scrutinized CPS's decision-making outside of when they're asking for rate increases? And I'm confident that there are major cuts that could be made that would not impact services or our goals, the same way we surely have room in some major parts of our general budget. So supporting a reduction in this increase and supporting this amendment is not inherently a vote to reduce city services, especially at the rate that our budget has grown. I wanted to make that clear for my colleagues who may be on the fence. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez, Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Mayor. And to the point that my colleague just made, I just wanted to ask a quick clarifying question. If we vote on this amendment to now reduce the rate that we are asking residents to pay to CPS, that rate is being paid by the residents of Bear County, but we would be asking to supplement that from dollars from the general fund, which is people that are residents of COSA pay for our general fund. So can you verify that that would be taking the burden of paying for CPS from Bear County to COSA residents for the additional two and a half percent?
We serve the entire community. Twenty-five percent of our customers are outside of the city of San Antonio, so I think that'd be an accurate statement.
And that includes other municipalities that are not, that doesn't include COSA. So that, that's why I can't support this amendment, because we'd be taking the, the burden of paying for all of this reliability, sustainability outside of COSA residents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Core, is there any further discussion on this? Okay, I'll, I'll just make some closing comments. Go ahead, Councilmember Yegar.
Are, are we going to take the amendment first and then get an opportunity to chime in on?
If you haven't spoken a second time, you'll have an opportunity to speak between the votes if you'd like.
Yes.
But this is one discussion, as the city attorney said. Okay, so I, I'll make my final remarks here. Could I pull up slide fourteen? It's, it's in the appendix, I think. So I, I show this to say that one of our goals in all of this is to make sure that at the end of the day, with the revenue requirements of CPS, we still maintain the most affordable rates in the state. That's important. As you can see, even with the proposed four point two-five percent CPS rate increase, we will still be lower than the current rates of all of our peer cities in the state of Texas, and I've seen the other graph that shows the twenty peers around the country were still the first or second lowest. Now, I understand this is a community that is cost-burdened, and I'm not going to begin to make judgments about what fifteen cents a month or five dollars a month mean for folks. We know it's hard, it's very hard. And I will tell you, up here with all my colleagues, I appreciate everyone's candor and discussion on this, because we work every day to make sure that we stretch every penny for this community. And so what's on the table with regard to an amendment is to reduce the rate by which we will fund CPS energy and the essentials that it needs. And I, and I will tell you, with one hundred percent surety, with the folks that are on the board here today, we scrub that budget every single month that we're in front of our public in our board meetings. And we expect that from the CPS Energy staff, and they have done that. What we have concluded is that after nearly a decade of no rate adjustments based on cost increases, et cetera, we have been severely under-investing in CPS energy, and we've got to catch up. We've got to catch up for the purpose of the cybersecurity, physical security, capacity improvements, the operating systems of the utility, et cetera, personnel. And I want to thank the folks here in the green shirts, our linemen, I guess, Rudy, are here, for the work that you're doing. There's not enough of those folks in our community that are out there when it's in the worst conditions, keeping your lights on. That's what we're talking about in terms of making sure that this essential city function functions when we need it. Now, again, I'm not going to make any assumptions about what this rate increase means for a particular family, but I can tell you, the answer to that problem is not to continue to under-fund the utility, just like the answer to the under-investment that's occurred in this community for decades and decades and decades, and the reason why we've got certain parts of town with sidewalks falling apart while other sides of town enjoy a brand-new one, is not to continue to under-invest in the city. However, we have conversations every year, the goal-setting session all the way through the passage of the budget, that tries to stretch every cent. And we, we increased, we maxed out our homestead exemption this year, we dropped our, our, our tax rate two years in a row, we're going to continue to do that every single year. In fact, Eric, Financial Policy of the City, correct me if I'm wrong, says that we are going to look at the tax rate and potentially adjust it down if we don't need to see those revenue increases every year. By policy, we're going to scrub that budget every single year. The answer to the challenges that we're facing in this community with under-investment in our utility and making sure that we have that basic function taken care of, and the under-investment in the city, whether that's public safety, parks, streets and sidewalks, et cetera, is not to continue that pattern, but to do it in a balanced, conscious way, conscious way. And I can tell you, nobody up here, you've heard it a number of times, wants to do this, least of all me. I've got a vote on it more than once. But things need to happen in order for us to make those improvements. I don't want to continue to be ranked among the top ten socio-economically segregated cities in the country. I don't want us to continue to labor with a wage-restrained city, wage-depressed city. I want to increase our educational outcomes. That takes investment. These things happen because we've been thoughtful. And for the sake of making sure we, we can say we didn't support the rate increase, I am not willing to compromise that. I'll take my lumps now if it means I can do the right thing. And the answer to the challenges that we're facing is not to continue the same patterns. And so I will not support the amendment, and I will support the CPS rate request because I think it's appropriate, it's measured, and it's conscious of all the challenges that we're facing in the community. I can't say that more emphatically. It's the right thing to do. As difficult it is, it is the right thing to do. So with that, we do have a motion in a second for an amendment which will reduce the city's, which will cut the rate increase in half, but also reduce the city's budget by forty-two and a half million in the coming year, which we will talk about, figure out how that happens. That's the amendment on the table. Did I phrase that correctly, Andy?
Mayor, the, the, the motion is to reduce it by half, the practical implications are the budgets, the ones that were discussed.
Okay. All right, so the amendment is on the table, won't repeat it anymore, I will not support Motion fails. We'll go now to the main motion, which is the proposed four and a quarter percent increase. There's a motion in a second for approval of item four. Councilmember Yegar.
At the end of the day, we need to do what is in the best interest of the community. And I am not oblivious to the fact, because I sat on that rate advisory committee, that we need a rate increase. I just think, given more time, given more opportunity to get out into the community, we wouldn't have gotten the number of postcards we've got, we would have, we, we received, we would have had more support. So I am supporting the rate increase today with the clear expectation that I'm going to continue to get the quality service that I'm getting from the CPS team, through Yvonne, and all of you that I've met, and I want to thank you for giving me that confidence that you are going to go with me out into the community and make sure that we communicate that this investment is in their best interest. While I would like it to come in smaller increments and find alternative ways to maybe reduce it, we're going to have to get creative and look at it through possibly rebates, rate reform, rate restructuring, but that only comes if we get the technology, and I know that. So I want to thank y'all for being here today, for working so hard, for my binder full of presentations, and I will be supporting it today because I know it is the right thing to do. But again, my priority is not just, it is those that are struggling financially, but it is all the rate payers of CPS. And I think by working together and looking for solutions, we can, we can become that top-tier utility. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yegar. And just a procedural note, we will have that discussion, as alluded to, by Councilmember Alderete Gavito and Councilmember Core, on the March B session, if not sooner, on the ADP alignments that were discussed up here. So with that, there's a motion in a second for approval.
Mayor, if I may, a quick clarifying point before there's a vote. There were a number of commitments Rudy made to the council to address certain issues that were raised by council members, and, and that commitment is to work with his staff and his board to come back and his board to come back with either proposals they have to approve or proposals that will come back to the city council. So I just wanted to make sure that, to clarify, there's no contingencies in terms of the vote the council's taking with respect to the rate increase. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. All right, there's a motion in a second for approval, item four. Please vote. All right, we'll go now to item number eleven. Eleven and twelve, are they together?
They can be together. Do we need to take them separately, Andy?
We have one discussion and two votes on eleven and twelve, Andy?
One discussion, two votes.
Okay, so we'll take up items eleven and twelve.
Item number eleven is an ordinance approving a construction contract with EasyBell Construction LLC in the amount not to exceed seven million eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine, and four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents, of which one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand nine-hundred dollars will be reimbursed by San Antonio Water System for necessary adjustments to their existing infrastructure related to the construction of Floyd Curl Drive, Habner Road to Charles Katz. Funding is from the 2022 General Obligation Bond Program, included in the fiscal year 2024 through 2029 capital improvement program. Item number twelve is an ordinance approving a construction contract with EasyBell Construction LLC in the amount of four million five-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars and seventy-five cents, of which three million six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand eight-hundred dollars and sixty cents will be funded by the Texas Department of Transportation. Fourteen thousand dollars will be reimbursed by San Antonio Water System, and one thousand dollars will be reimbursed by CPS Energy for the Hamilton Wolf Cycle Track Project. Funding of nine-hundred-and-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fifteen cents is from previously authorized General Obligation Bond Funds and included in the fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2029 capital improvements program.
Great. Before I hand it over to you, Councilmember Yegran, we do have one citizen sign up to speak on items eleven, twelve. Dick McNairy.
I, I guess, good afternoon, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Dick McNairy, and I'm president of Project Control. We also represent the Medical Center Alliance. We started at the Medical Center in 2004, and we are, I'm here to support the award of EasyBell Construction. Since 2004, about a hundred-and-ten million dollars has been invested in the Medical Center. The Medical Center Alliance has invested thirty-one million, a little bit more than thirty percent. We have completed eleven phases, and those phases sometimes include one intersection or more components. EasyBell has been the successful contractor on, on six or half of those, more than half, and they've done a very good job. In fact, we do prefer EasyBell over other contractors out there. The Medical Center Alliance has a big stake in the construction. EasyBell has worked very well with stakeholders, traffic control as well. And so that's why I'm here today, to support EasyBell. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Yegran.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I pulled these items, eleven and twelve, on improving the contracts with EasyBell Construction to provide details regarding concerns about this construction company that were brought to my attention about the, the, the quality of work and responsiveness by EasyBell Construction on projects within District Three. I, I do think we need to move forward with projects. I, we need construction. My concern is, I'm not sure if the bandwidth is there for EasyBell to complete the construction. And I did want to ask Andy, regarding our responsible bidders, our responsible bidders ordinance that we completed, if, if a contractor is not responsive to a city council office or to the businesses, how can we bring that to people's attention?
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I do have the responsible bidder ordinance here in front of me. There are a number of things that would put a, a company potentially on the responsible bidder list. One of them includes frivolous litigation against the city respective construction, or another one is if there is a, a contract termination before completion. And the fifth is a history of, I'm sorry, the other one is a history of poor performance, which is documented through our score sheet that, working with Public Works, we developed to make sure contractors do a variety of things to give us assurance that the work will be performed at a high quality and on time. Amongst those things that we look at, at the checklist, is responsiveness to the city staff and, and other third-party stakeholders in terms of issues related to construction. So to answer your question, as, as part of that check sheet, we certainly can include responsiveness to inquiries from council staff on that.
Thank you, Andy. And I, I think I just want the business owners and the councilmember in District Eight to know some of the concerns we've had in this latest project, which is the South Pressa Street, along with the Giver Street, which is a sixteen-point-nine million. South Pressa Street is a sixteen-point-nine million project, probably the largest project. Since January 2022, EasyBell has been awarded a total of ninety-five-point-five million in bond projects. But the, the incidents in District Three are negatively impacting our small businesses, and my concern is that the council's priority to make sure we work with small businesses is not being heard by our contractor. So, and just to, to highlight, there was a raw sewage flood into residents' homes. There's, there's been issues with, in terms of trying to reach EasyBell regarding parking and construction crews repeatedly trespass and staged equipment on private property despite numerous efforts by Public Works to address the matter. The business, the small business owners along Givers feel ignored, are inadequately updated, and subsequently, EasyBell has sent the letter to address this issue. And so I wanna enter these into, into the record. My incur, my hope is that bringing this to attention and light is that if you vote today to move this forward in District Eight, that you, that, that they do better in District Eight regarding, and with the small business owners, because I think we need to address the contractor, the contractor's performance as the project is going along. And so at this time, I will, I am pulling the item to vote no against that until I see some improvements in, on my projects currently in District Three. And I just encourage that councilmembers continue to, if you get contacted, and that was the thing, somebody told, a contractor or subcontractor told the business owner to contact the councilmember's office. So that's how my office got involved, and now they're currently wearing hard hats and yellow vests and having to purchase steel-toe shoes to help a law, help the small business owners in this project. So I'll be voting no. I'm pulling these items to vote no, and I just want my council colleagues to be aware of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Mayor Protem, just one, one thing. It is completely, completely unacceptable for a contractor, an employee, when we're dealing with somebody who has a claim or is unhappy about something that the city's doing, for anyone to ever say, "Call your councilperson." That is, that is not appropriate. We will not accept that as a standard, neither from an employee's standpoint nor someone we pay to do a job, whatever the job is. And so I wanted you to know that I've, I've talked to the company. I've made that very clear. We will, we will incorporate that as part of this review, and as Andy was describing. But I just wanted to share with you that it is completely unacceptable from my standpoint as well, regardless of what we're paying them to do. It could be, it could be, it could be a contractor doing construction, it could be delivering paper plates and pencils to the city. That is not acceptable, and, and, and I appreciate that if you ever find yourselves in that position, please alert me, because it's not something we expect as anybody that's doing business with the city.
Sorry, I took the ball in the middle of the play, so Councilmember Polais.
Thanks. Councilwoman Yegran is not wrong. If that's, if that happened, that's a problem. And EasyBell, you guys have some work to do to patch up the relationship at this office in District Three, and clearly you've got some, you know, upset customers in that district, and somebody clearly, I mean, I believe they're telling us that they're upset, they're upset, right? I, I will tell you, in my experience with, and quite honestly, I've never worked with you guys, I really don't know you. Today was the first time I, I got to meet you. Thanks for coming and staying through everything that we had to stay through today. But, you know, I, I, my constituents, like my number-one customers right now are the Medical Center Foundation and Medical Center Alliance, right, who are co-investors in, in this project. If I remember correctly, I think there were only two or three projects like this where we actually had co-investors. And, and if you guys have used them before, and, and Dick, you, you and I have known each other since when we were young men. I'm, I'm still much younger. But you and I, I, I trust you more than I trust anybody when it comes to project management and scrubbing these things. And, you know, they built, I think you guys did the Floyd Curl Green Street, if I was, if I was, remember correctly, and... Okay, don't, don't contradict the councilman again, okay? No. Okay, well, but, but there are three or four projects that, I mean, and streets that are just gorgeous in, in the, in the district, and I, I never heard of any problems. And so I'm gonna, I make the motion to approve, but I, I do think it's, it's on you guys to, to address the, the issues that Councilwoman Yegran brought up. It's fair that she's angry that people are calling her and, and giving her heat. And so that's my motion. Looking for a second. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, there was a motion in a second on item eleven. Could you, could you state your motion, Councilman?
Motion to approve item eleven and twelve.
Okay. We can do that. So there's a motion in a second for approval of item eleven and twelve. Did I hear a second on both of those?
Yes, I said.
Okay, so we'll continue discussion now. I don't have a cue. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez.
Thank you. The contractor sounds familiar. Are you aware, would you mind letting me know if there are any projects in District Two that the contractor has done?
I'm Stephen Park, President of EasyBell Construction. Yes, we are in District Two. We are with, we're on the New Braunfels project.
That's exactly what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. Councilmember Yegran? Okay, I'm trying to read faces here. Councilmember Core.
Yeah, I'll just say, and, and Rozi, I'm sure remembers this, we had a very serious project that was going in District Nine, and it, it ended up being a year past due, and EasyBell came in and really saved that project for us. Rozi, have, have there been other complaints about their service to your department?
Not, Councilwoman, not just that he helped us on the Aldine and Burr Oak Drainage Project. Prior to that, when we terminated contractor for Bitter's Road, they came over there and really helped us a lot.
Yeah, they saved two projects in District Nine that we have problems with.
In District Nine. They assisted us on our famous North San Mary project. They helped us to expedite that project summer of this year. They also finished Commerce Street, just next door for us. Original contractor had some challenges finishing. They are our, one of the best contractor. We go for them. They work very easily. In this case, we had some issue, they understand, and they're going to resolve it.
Thank you, Rozi. That's why I second the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Courage. Councilmember Yegran.
Yeah, I, I was afraid this was gonna happen. So I, my concern is that the attitude is different towards the north side than it is in the southern sector. And I'll be talking to my colleagues in the southern sector who have projects with EasyBell, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yegran. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'll explain my abrupt, my abrupt, almost outburst. So for those of you who are aware, North New Braunfels has undergone, has undergone a lot of trials and tribulations. It has been problem after problem after problem attributed to the contractor. And again, this is a concern that I have, that now there's Districts Two, District Three, areas of town that are marginalized that are not being treated well. And we talk generally about contractors all the time who do so-so work in our districts, but then go to the north side and perform stellar work. And when we contract these folk to do work in District Two, in District Three, in District Five, we expect that they're going to do that same quality work, and that has not been the case. And I'm extremely disappointed, because Rozi, I, last time I had my conversation with you about updates on North New Braunfels, I said, "Who is this contractor?" That was the first time I had heard the name. And then I said, "I don't want them to get any more contracts moving forward." And I told that to my constituents, that they should not, and I would make, and I would do my best to make sure that they do not get contracts moving forward. And I think that that's a challenge, that's a really big problem and a misstep on our part if we're allowing one of our biggest, most contentious projects to, to not set a precedent here. So I'm just gonna leave that be. I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKee Rodriguez. Rod, yeah?
I just wanted to point out, this is a, these are both low-bid contracts. So they're, they're a responsible bidder. They have a right to bid on contracts. They submitted the low bid, so, so they were selected. So it is our recommendation that we give them the contract, follow the process.
All right. Any further discussion on eleven and twelve? Hearing none, there's a motion in a second for approval of items eleven and twelve. Please vote. Item twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five is an ordinance restating the rules and procedures for the scheduling and consideration of items at city council and committee meetings.
All right. Councilmember Castillo pulled item twenty-five.
And, and Mayor, we have a presentation, if the council wants to hear it.
Oh, okay. Do you want the presentation?
Yeah, I have a presentation.
Okay, could we get a motion on twenty-five?
I, I make a motion that we move twenty-five to a B session.
Well, let me, let me get a, well...
I'll, I'll motion to approve.
Okay. A motion to approve in a second, and then when you get up to your time to speak, you can make an alternative if you'd like. Councilmember Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor, and I wanted to thank my colleague, Councilman White, for his advocacy. And when he came in, he identified that there were some hiccups with the CCR process and proposed some solutions. And my team went back to look at the governance committee and how many times they've met, and the overall submitted CCRs, and what we found was that only half of the CCR filed, filed were agendas, as well as the average governance committee meeting taking roughly ninety-four minutes, and the average number of items on the governance agenda, not including approval of the minutes, is roughly two-point-five agenda items. And while I understand the, the need to create a timeline, looking at the original ordinance from 2011, there is a, a standard process that's put forth in the ordinance. And the ordinance calls that requests, request consideration of an action to set general city policy, to make changes in general policy that may have budgetary or financial impact, to consider an action that requires substantial staff work, or that requires a redevelopment of staff resources from an existing priority, will be placed on the next available agenda to the city council governance committee by the clerk, right? So a concern that I have is that there's already an ordinance that exists with a timeline, and if creating a new ordinance, what confidence, you know, or assurances do we have that that new ordinance would be followed? Further, there's a couple of pillars and changes within the proposed, within item twenty-five, rather, that I have some questions about. For example, the current process ordinance states that the committee shall neither be used to screen policy or other city council initiatives, nor be used as a way to advance any one issue or agenda over another. And the proposed ordinance put in front of us today to approve doesn't include that language. So my understanding of that language is that it ensures that the governance committee doesn't play favorites with policy requests. So I guess my question to, to Andy is what, or to staff, is what was the purpose of removing this language with the current item?
The, the answer, Councilwoman, is that the establishing the requirement timelines, both for placing on the governance... both for placing on the governance committee and for the governance committee to act, would essentially then remove that requirement or the stipulation that that not be used as delay, unduly delay item. So in short, the, the time limits were meant to address the language you're talking about.
Thank you for that clarification, Andy. And an additional overall concern that I have is that this determines the public policy process, right, that each of us were elected to do. And with the current ordinance as written is, any CCR can be killed within governance. And I think that we all have a responsibility as council members that we have that debate and conversation about what moves forward and what doesn't. And I, I just would have liked to have had a B session on this item in that it determines what kind of policy that we can push forth on behalf of our constituency. So I do have some concerns. And I did have a question, if you could just clarify, Andy, as well. This in no way would remove the, the three-signature memo process, correct?
That's correct, Councilwoman. That's found in the city charter. So yes, the council can.